Okay. It's five o'clock on Wednesday, September the 8th, 2021. And this is the Patent Township Board of Supervisors meeting. So I call the meeting to order. First item of business would be the Pledge of Allegiance. So join me if you can and we will stand and pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to public comments, Manager Erickson is going to update us on a new act, Act 65 of 2021, that affects all municipal meetings. So if you want to go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, the state legislature passed Act 65 at the end of July, went into effect a couple of weeks ago, requires that all public agencies, which includes all municipalities and all authorities and all the subgroups of municipalities and authorities, that they have to post meeting agendas online and at their office at least 24 hours prior to a meeting. The act specifies that items may only be added to an agenda once it's been posted through a process, we'll go through that in a little bit. As a continuation on, I've provided under item 1C, proposed policy, asked the board to review. The first paragraph starts with the tentative agenda for the Patent Township Board of Supervisors. It's typically published on Friday, and then we almost always publish an updated agenda on Tuesday where we end up picking up some typically more information for existing items, but sometimes we do add a new item to an agenda. And that item is posted or published on Tuesday afternoon, which gives us more than 24 hours before our Wednesday meeting at 5:00. And that is our posted quote unquote agenda for the meeting. I ask that the board, for the board to consider instituting this policy, which would be kind of a two-step policy where at the beginning of the meeting, after we've done the pledge and the chair has called the meeting to order, he would ask other board members, if they have additions of agenda items. There are two classes of agenda items that can be added to an agenda without a vote of the board. Those are items that are either considered emergency business or are considered de minimis. And those are defined in the act. If anybody wants a copy of the act, I have some of the handouts that we referenced here in the agenda. If members of the board propose adding items as emergency or de minimis, the chair would review the item, decide if it is in fact emergency or de minimis, and if they are so, he would make a determination to accept them and place them on the agenda. Now, if the board does not consider them emergency or de minimis, then they would fall into the next paragraph. Board members can propose adding an item to an agenda that is not emergency business or not de minimis. If they do, they should ask the board for recognition and they have to make a motion. This is required by the Act, by Act 65. Board member wishing to add an item would have to make a motion stating the nature of the item and the reason for changing the agenda. If another board member seconds that motion, then the chair should oversee a discussion and a vote on the motion. And this is a vote just to add the item to the agenda, not on the item itself, but to add it to the agenda. If the motion is approved by a majority of the vote of the individuals present voting, and that's language right out of the act, then the item can be added to the agenda. And I'm proposing we let the chair determine where we would place that in the agenda. Recommend that the board consider that language, discuss it, and consider action to adopt it.
Thank you, Doug. Any board members wish to ask questions or discuss this? Is it clear? Oh, Elliot, go ahead.
Is this item on the agenda for us to discuss tonight?
Yes, it is, sir.
Good.
Any other question? Oh, go ahead.
Then I would move that we adopt the necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second, Sam Rock.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any additional questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, the motion is to adopt the proposed policy in accordance with the new Act 65 of 2021. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 I see none opposed. Any opposed? None opposed, so the motion carries. Now we'll proceed to public comments.
Well, technically, we should ask if anybody wants to add anything to the agenda.
Oh, you're right. So, does any member of the board or supervisor wish to add an item to the agenda that is not currently in the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public comments, so as Doug explained at the beginning, residents may address the board on any item that is not already on the agenda. And your time limit is five minutes, so speak under that or up to five minutes. We already have a request from a resident, Valerie Burnett. So you can come to the podium and identify yourself, where you reside, and go ahead.
Valerie Burnett, Toftrees Avenue. And I actually have two separate comments, although they are slightly related. The first thing that I wanted to start with is just sort of clearing the air about some things that have been said in this room about people who walk and bicycle. In previous discussions, several times, it's come up that people who walk and bicycle don't actually pay for their infrastructure. This is a really dangerous thing to say. People who walk and bicycle are pretty vulnerable already. It creates an us versus them situation. It sets up an unequal power dynamic when anyone makes a statement like that, and it stifles conversation. It also strongly implies that people who walk and bicycle are a burden to society. Putting this into perspective, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration just counted 298 extreme weather events from 1980 to 2020. 298 extreme weather events resulted in over 14,492 deaths in the United States, directly related to extreme weather events, and over $1,975 trillion worth of damage. 2020 had $99 billion in damages, a record high for one year, and 2021 is slated, it's going in the same direction. It's safe to say that people who regularly walk, bicycle, and roll to reduce their carbon footprint and for lack of wealth are not the people most responsible for the climate chaos, death, destruction, and almost $2 trillion in damage. The fact is that we are all paying directly and indirectly for the cost of climate change. So let's be clear, climate change is the real burden to society. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you for listening to that. And next up, what will it take to complete the Belfont Central Rail Trail? There's a document here that's pretty self-explanatory in a lot of ways. We're talking about one portion of a proposed trail that was studied in 2008. So we're looking at a segment in Patent Township that's already heavily used. If we go to the next page, what I really want to point out here, just like today, a lot of puddles. This is a spot where some people have put logs in the past and used them to walk like balance beams through the mud puddles that develop here. And we're looking toward Toftrees, the golf course, and then Toftrees Avenue is where we're looking, what we're looking toward. One day I saw a man in a business suit, dress shoes, on a business call, balanced on those logs, trying to conduct business while he was walking on the trail. It was an interesting sight. Lots of people use the trail already. Things like this do deter more people from using the trail. And if we go to construction costs, I'm no expert here. I simply put down in a chart what was listed in the feasibility study from 2008 and accrued the 4% every year. So every year we delay, it costs more money and more people use the trail. And, well, knowing that my husband is the one who broke his ankle, that was over $10,000. So when I look at this, I say that's 70 people with broken ankles.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
And the next one is 42 broken ankles. And then if we skip to, you folks know all about the funding sources. People who use active transportation and mass transit, this image on the next page. 60 people take up very little space compared to 60 vehicles. 60 vehicles take the space of 600 bicycles. So there you have it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Burnett, thank you for your comments. And I know Susan Wheeler is on the Zoom session, so she's aware of your contribution, and she has a copy of this. Elliot, you have your hand raised? Would you?
Yes, I agree with Valerie, except I think that there are very few people who are exclusively walkers, walkers or drivers or bike riders. I think a lot of people do all these different things. And to separate us out differently as that we're not interested in solving the other problems is, I think we could be more productive than that. I think we need to address all these different issues, and I don't think any of us is exclusively a mass transit person, or a walker, or a driver, or whatever. We do what's necessary to get around, and we hope to do it most efficiently. And we do have an extreme climate problem. And since 2020, there's actually been an increase in the amount of severe thunderstorms and severe weather. And the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration would be well to figure out a way to actually get the information to people before they're dead, rather than talking about just things like remnant storms or post-tropical storms, terms that don't mean anything.
Okay, thank you, Elliot. We have another citizen present here in the room who wishes to speak. Please identify yourself and where you live.
Yes, hi. My name is Matt Kane. I live in Turtle Creek Apartments on Toftrees Avenue. I'm speaking today in support of using Recovery Act funds for the upgrade of the Belfont Rail Trail and for local mass transit. In June, I broke my ankle while riding on the unmaintained portion of the rail trail near where I live. Due to the unusual heavy rains caused by climate change, color had been deeply washed out, and despite my efforts to carefully cross it, I fell off my bicycle. I cannot say enough how well the Patent Township Police, the Center County Lifelink EMTs, and many people who were using the trail that day helped care for me and got me off the trail. I also want to acknowledge the Toftrees Resort for lending a golf cart to get me to an awaiting ambulance. So everyone was great, and I thank them all. My wife and I moved to our current location five and a half years ago from a neighboring county. We were frequently traveling back and forth to visit here. And to reduce our carbon footprint, we chose to move here so that we could walk or bicycle to libraries, stores, restaurants, parks, and doctors' offices. We discovered that we were able to reduce our driving by 70%. We also had a significant decrease in our energy consumption by renting an apartment instead of living in a home that we owned. I eat a plant-based diet and take public transportation frequently. When visiting my grandchildren in Maryland and North Carolina, I take a bus to Harrisburg and Amtrak from there. In fact, they call me Papa Choo Choo. I do not fly. I do this so that I can look my grandchildren in the eye and say to them that I am trying my best not to make things worse for their future. Ethically, I need to act rather than just be ego anxious, and I need to be hopeful, even though I realize that my actions alone are just a drop in the bucket. I know I'm not alone in my efforts, and I also am aware of the fact that it's easier for me being retired to be able to focus on these things. Yet, experts agree that individual efforts alone are not enough to tackle climate change. It requires the efforts of elected officials at every level to make a difference. I'm concerned that using more taxpayers' money to support already heavily subsidized for-profit airline industry is not only going to make our climate worse, at best, it takes, it will take many decades for planes to be free of fossil fuel. There's great emphasis with our local governments on attracting new businesses. I suggest that will happen naturally if we improve our local quality of life first. According to the 2010 U.S. Census, the Toftrees area had 2,053 residents. And as you know, that number has dramatically increased since then. Pedestrians from the area are stranded due to unsafe conditions on and near Toftrees heading toward restaurants and stores. Completion of the Toftrees section of the Belfont Rail Trail will greatly help this situation. I urge you to consider funding this far past due upgrade to the rail trail that is heavily used. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another citizen who wishes to speak. Identify yourself and where you live.
My name is Rod Kayat, and don't get my minute yet. I think it's today, the 8th, correct? I see September 9th. You scared me.
We apologize. It is the 8th, yes.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the pickleball court. And thank you, Doug, for...
Pickleball is on the agenda, and we'll be taking comments at that time when it comes up on the agenda.
Right. I am just making comment, actually, not a discussion or anything, because I have to run to another meeting.
Mr. Kayat asked, he called me earlier and said he has to leave at 5:30, so he asked if he could comment.
Oh, okay.
I appreciate you allowing me to speak. Thank you so much.
Five minutes.
Yep, hopefully less than that. First of all, thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and thank you for actually creating that pickleball court for our community. If you actually hitting your mark, actually to create community by creating the pickleball, I think you hit your target. If you are trying to break your community, I think you are also hitting your target right now by actually changing the hour. You know, when you are not allowing us to play Monday or Friday, and I hear it's only two court, you really are defragmenting the community. And I could tell you, and please forgive me for my shortcomings, if I'm saying anything to upset anybody, that's not my intention. All my intention is to bring awareness to the whole situation. So your decision actually to limit the time, to change the time, people have different times, they want to go to the court, you really are defragmenting that community. And I sent a letter actually to Doug, I don't know if he shared with you or not, but I have friends who live at the golf course, you know? He has his window broke twice from a golfer within one month. You know what? They really didn't close the golf course. That's what happened, you know? When you are living close to your stuff, you know what to expect. When Teaberry Ridge, actually, the community of Teaberry Ridge started over there, people went and bought a land over there because behind Teaberry, there was an open field, and people liked that environment. They said it's an open field, and my kid will run and everything. Not even a few years later, they actually, which everybody knows, the Blue Course Drive. the Blue Course Drive went right there in Teaberry. You know, they created that road. You know what? The township, they felt this is the benefit for the whole community to create that road, and they did it. We didn't tell everybody, you have to move from that because the road, we kept coming. You know, the project needed to be done at the Blue Course, and they did it. My, I think parks are created for everybody to enjoy. You know, I remember when my kids used to use that park to play baseball. We used to park on both sides of the road, both sides. Or everybody come over and play for a few hours and they leave. Now, I honestly feel sad. You are actually taking parking lot from that park. There's only seven spots, and you have to paint few of them not to allow people park. You know what? I am taxpayer for that township. And I like, I have no cramps about it, paying my taxes, you know? It's good. I'm glad you are utilizing the right way. But to go ahead and utilize my taxes again, to say, you're going to revert those court to a tennis? There's plenty of tennis court, as everybody's aware in this town. That's the only place we are playing pickleball, you know? And there is a huge massive of people do not want to go to the Y and play. They like those court. They really do. They want to continue there. So when you are forcing him to go to the Y, they don't want to join the Y. They are happy to play there. So I really appreciate if you reconsider that and see the value of this. You are building community, you know? Your decision actually, I actually haven't seen those people ever you made those decisions. I haven't seen the same people I used to play with because those minor adjustment. So if you are building community, I think those courts are amazing. But if your goal actually to defragment this community, also it's being done, to be honest with you, for limiting the time and the hour. Thank you so much, really for listening to me. I really appreciate it. Doug, thank you so much for allowing me. And I'm sorry I have to leave. Thank you, guys.
Okay. We're still in public comments. So is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? And I'll get to the supervisors who have their hand raised after. I'd see if there are any other citizens who wish to comment. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand if you wish to comment now. I see no other people here who wish to give us a poll of comments. So board of supervisors, Betsy, were you first?
I, I might have.
Yeah, go ahead then. Betsy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to take a concerted effort to thank Valerie, Burnett, and Matt King. Did I get your name right? For the research that you have both done and the time and effort. Pull it together and come in and present it. And I would like to add that the statistic I use about the impact of climate change is an article I read recently, which surveyed all of the counties across the United States. And 1/3 of all counties in the U.S. experienced some form of climate catastrophe this summer. So it is happening. I applaud you for your efforts. And especially Valerie, thank you for the research on funding sources. That will help.
Elliot, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask whether, two things. One, do we have that item on the agenda, a future agenda, to talk about the funding for the Rails Trails project?
It will probably be a subject of our discussions, both as part of the American Rescue Plan funds and with our capital improvement plan. So both those things will be upcoming in the next two months.
Just as we're doing that. And the second thing is, I remember the situation with Teaberry Ridge a little bit differently. I recall that the golf course was there first. And in fact, the university put up a driving range for golfers. And then the Teaberry Ridge folks moved in and demanded that the lights be turned out and that the driving range hours be curtailed because it was a nuisance to them. So I don't remember it being an empty field that was destroyed by the opening of the golf course.
Okay, thank you. We are now moving on in the agenda. We're now at item three. Three A is an economic development proposal, establishing an incentive pool to attract direct air service to Charlotte, North Carolina from University Park Airport. We have Commissioner Mike Pipe. Is he, Doug, do you know?
Yeah, he was going to speak.
Okay, Mike, if you would turn on your video and unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, Chair Trevino. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. So as you all have in your packet, as distributed, there is an opportunity that exists before this community to incentivize a local tourism effort. We can be looking at through our apologies here. This would be through our Center County Airport, the partnership that we have with them. American Airlines is strongly considering the opportunity to have at least, at minimum, 12 flights a week in and out of the Center County Airport. That would be establishing a connection to an international airport that's in Charlotte, North Carolina. And the opportunity that the Center County, I'm sorry, that the American Rescue Plan has is to invest in our communities and to make strategic investments and help certain industries that have been hurt by the pandemic. We have seen a drastic decrease in the tourism that's been here in Center County. And so through our American Rescue Plan monies at the county, we are looking at putting towards a quarter million dollars to incentivize American Airlines. And I've reached out to my chair counterparts throughout many of the municipalities that have a strong connection with the Center County Airport Authority, to ask them to also make contributions either out of their economic development funds that they have set aside annually or through their American Rescue Plan funds that they've been sent. And so, you know, the amount that we're suggesting would be potentially 10,000 or 15,000 from Patton Township. We know that many municipalities in the Center Region and potentially even Benner and Belfont as well would be looking at making a contribution. And so with some of the incentive package that the Penn State portion of the airport and the Center County Airport Authority can put up, we're fast approaching about a million dollars that can be incentivized. And this is sort of the same approach that was taken in 2012 and 2013 to incentivize, it was, I want to make sure, yes, United Airlines to establish a flight to Chicago. And so again, we're taking the same approach and incentivizing another airline here again to, you know, incentivize tourism but also economic development as well. And be happy to answer any questions. If I can't answer them, the Center County Airport Authority Executive Director Jim Meyer is happy to answer any questions. I can relay them to him. I understand as well that you have a seat on that board or that authority. And George Downsborough has been a terrific asset to the Airport Authority. And so I'm sure that either George or myself can get any answers to any questions that you might have. But I appreciate your time tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Board of supervisors, you have questions. Pamela, Rob, go ahead. Unmute yourself first.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. I just have a question. Due to today, American Airlines pilots are thinking about going on strike. Is that going to affect this project in any way?
So that's news to me. I did not know that that was happening. So I don't know the particular details about when they're looking at going on strike. But the estimates for when the service would be established, according to Executive Director Meyer, would be either late 2021 or early 2022. So there's a bit of time between then and now. I think the way that American Airlines is structured is they have, you know, people who deal with contract negotiations, then also individuals who work with expanding service and opportunities for folks to travel. And so I would think those two separate operations that they have within their organization, they would still be able to focus on expanding service. And, you know, other folks would be working on the contract negotiations and what that looks like. So in terms of the meeting that's going to be upcoming, it's going to be still on September 22nd, Wednesday, September 22nd. That's going to be a meeting with some interested parties here and American Airlines to, again, talk with them through some of the incentive package that's been put together. I have not heard about any delay there. So I think everything is moving forward with that conversation.
Michael, thank you. And I think it's due to the overwhelming work of the pilots. They're overworked, they're fatigued, and they're trying to get the attention that, you know, something has to be done. So I just want to make sure that we're not caught up in the midst of, you know, their negotiations and their problems, that it overlaps what we want to do. Thank you.
Elliot, go ahead.
I support the idea of supporting flights to Charlotte, just as I have supported the flights to Chicago. And it's not just for people coming to do tourism here. It's for our own residents and people to do business anywhere in the country. And so I support it completely. I don't think that means we're going to have less walking or that we're going to have less other activities. It may actually be more economical to fly than to clog the roadways. But in any case, I support what Michael's trying to do and what the airport's trying to do.
Board members, any other questions? Betsy Whitman, go ahead.
Just a comment. I would like to go on the record that I have mixed feelings about increasing the air traffic to this area when we do not have on our near agenda, as far as I know, any discussion of increasing rail access. And I think pertinent to the suggestions that Mr.
King.
King said earlier. Yeah, I would like to see us moving in that direction. I'd like to see a depot here in State College.
Okay, I'm going to open it up now for public comments. Anybody here present in the room or on Zoom also wish to comment? Ask a question, make any discussion? Go ahead. Ms. Burnett, yes?
And I have a document to go with this.
I don't have it, if you do.
Oh.
Which document was that? Poster?
Was it the poster? Oh, okay.
Yes, E Plurbasunum, it came up earlier.
Okay, I closed it, I think. So I thought.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, I thought it was part of the other. I have to go looking through my email to find it. I'm sorry, it's probably not a good.
Can you go ahead and make your comments while they're?
The poster that's going to come up is E Plurbasunum and basically how we can imagine a brighter future. As of 2016, Center Region already had a local carbon footprint of at least two times that of the global average. If we truly believe in climate change with any level of integrity, we would not be actively creating ways to use taxpayer money to increase our carbon footprint. While gathering signatures for the petition for improving and expanding the Belfont rail trail, everyone I spoke with clearly acknowledged that in the face of climate change, we have to change our ways. And that included statements about fare-free bus passes, more fare-free bus passes, as well as rail service. People really do want rail service. I heard that time and time again. Subsidizing and incentivizing a private company to increase air travel so that our future prosperity depends on enticing businesses and tourists that rely on this exclusive form of travel runs counter to our proposed climate goal to reduce our carbon footprint. Supporting this project benefits the few, those privileged enough to fly, which means that we are actively supporting an unjust model of transportation that contributes to unhealthy people and an unhealthy planet. Imagine a brighter future by supporting smart, resilient, and sustainable economic growth that would rely on a more just transportation system that prioritizes and enables universal access and affordability for all using the cleanest and most renewable energy sources, mass transit, including rail and active transportation. To quote Enrique Penalosa, former mayor of Bogota, "A developed country is not a place where the poor have cars, it's where the rich use public transportation." Every step of the planning process, we need to ask, does this increase carbon emissions? If it does, why would we want to curse our children and grandchildren with this burden? And so for their sake, we must ask, how can we do better? Let's imagine and plan to do better for the health of people and the planet. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will add one more thing. There is a thing called sustainable economics, steady state economics. And it is part of the Agriculture Department at Penn State. It is not part of the Economics Department. And I question why.
Thank you for your comments. Can you stop sharing screen now, please? So I can see the rest of the audience. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Elliot, go ahead.
I agree that we should have rail service. I think that building it is going to be a challenge and will require probably the creation of more carbon in that process. But in the end, if we have a real rail service, it'll be a great help. The only rail service right now that links us to, say, the main line in Pennsylvania is the line that goes from Belfont-Milesburg to Tyrone, which would have to be upgraded quite a bit. And hundreds, a couple hundred years ago, when the railroad was put through and the horseshoe curve was done in 1854, the area south of us benefited from having that service. But I think we should have it. And I would like to see the existing rail service, the passenger rail service, increased, as we suggested before, so that it's not just one train a day in each direction from Pittsburgh to New York City, that more of our residents could actually take advantage of using rail service that exists right now without actually spending any more to increase the number of, to increase the railroads. But I think all these things have to be looked at together in an integrated fashion. I don't think any one thing is going to solve the problem or create the problem and make it worse. But I'm glad that we have so many people who are working in different ways to make things better rather than worse.
Okay, thank you, Elliot. Anita, go ahead.
Yes, I support what Supervisor Abrams just said. I'm wondering if the place to put our voice would be with our representative to the appropriate CAG committee, the Transportation Committee, perhaps Supervisor Rob or others on other committees to, because obviously this will require a very large regional cooperative effort. And maybe we start to bring the issue up at the appropriate CAG committee.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else wish to comment? If not, let's go ahead and make a decision. I'm open to anyone who wishes to propose a motion regarding County Commissioner Pipe's request for Patton Township financial support. Yes, Elliot Abrams, go ahead. Unmute yourself first, please.
Maybe everybody's better off if I mute it. But in any case, I propose that we support the move to increase the air traffic, air service, but that we also, at the same time, examine the full gamut of transportation through the Transportation Committee to see what other improvements. what other improvements we can make with existing or future funding, make it a part of the same motion.
Okay, you got all that? That was a long motion. So there are two parts, right? You're proposing that Patent Township support this request and the second part...
Support the air, yes. But that we also support other initiatives to make transportation more efficient for our region and for visitors who want to visit here.
Okay, you got that.
Is there a specific dollar amount?
Yeah. Are you proposing a specific dollar amount to support?
Was, was, was there an amount listed?
Well, suggested was $10,000 to $15,000 was what Commissioner suggested.
I'll support either one.
We need a specific dollar amount for the motion, please.
$10,500. Or $12,500.
$12,500, okay. Now, is there a second?
I'll second. Anita.
The motion is moved and seconded. Now, discussion, Supervisors, any discussion? Yes, Ms. Rob, go ahead.
I just want to add to what Supervisor T. Being on the TLU Committee, we've already kind of briefly discussed it, and I think we are all aboard with moving forward on the increase of the tourism for the airport. So I'm all for it, behind Elliot and his motion, 100%. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Any other discussion, questions? Any public comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll move to, oh, Ms. Burnett, yes, go ahead.
If I could just add one thing. It would be nice if there was a way to do a very complete survey. There are a lot of people that I know personally that refuse to fly at this point. And it would be nice to have a non-biased survey that specifically asks people about choice in, in transportation. And to get a significant number of people to respond to that. And I would work with someone on that, going door-to-door if I had to. Not tainting it, but just finding out what people here really want. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Yeah, Commissioner Pipe shaking his head, so he's received your suggestion, and so has Mr. Meyer from the Airport Authority. And, and Mr. Downsborough is our representative on the Center Region Airport Authority. Any other comments, discussion? So let's move to a vote then. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
I see four hands raised. Any opposed? Raise your hand, say no.
Nay, no.
Okay, the vote passes, the motion passes, the vote was four to one. Thank you very much, Commissioner Pipe, Mr. Meyer, and Mr. Downsborough.
Thank you very much for your time and support. Thank you.
Okay, next item is 3B, Bicycle Friendly Business Designation. I think Susan Wheeler will have some remarks regarding this.
Yes, I guess this is really just an announcement for everyone at the board, able to know that we've been awarded the Bronze Level of the Bicycle Friendly Business. As I'm sure you remember, earlier this year, the Recreation Advisory Committee had made a request to the board asking that they could pursue a designation of this sort because of their interest and activities they've been involved with in trying to create a connected community with what we do with our parks and bicycle pedestrian path planning. And their interest was to have some recognition for the township and all the efforts that we've been working towards and trying to make a connected community. After it was agreed that they could pursue the application, they worked with myself and Trish Meek of Century Region Planning Agency, who's also on Zoom here with us tonight. And we worked with them to put the application together and brought it back to the board in June. The application was made, and we just found out about a week and a half ago that we were successful at the Bronze Level. Thirty-seven awards were made in this round, three of which were from Pennsylvania, and Patent Township was one of those. And so I would thank the board for allowing Recreation Advisory Committee to go ahead and seek this designation. And I think that we can continue to try to increase our level as we move through time and do more things that make us a more pedestrian bicycle-friendly community. Trish is also on Zoom. I don't know, Trish, if you have anything you'd like to add?
I just wanted to thank Patent Township for all that they're doing. I mean, the progress that your community has made recently with adoption of a bicycle and pedestrian plan, applying for grant opportunities to construct significant infrastructure in the community, it all makes a significant difference because we know that our bike facilities are a regional network, and these connections are significant for not only your residents but for others in the area. So it really is a very significant accomplishment, and you're only the second municipality in Center County to go for a designation and receive it. So you should be very proud of the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Trish and Susan. Okay, the next agenda item is, first, any comments or questions? I'm sorry, Anita, go ahead.
I didn't have a comment. I'm sorry. Was my hand raised?
Oh, all right. Pam, Rob, Supervisor Rob, go ahead.
Trish, at our TLU meeting, I think the Center Region was awarded the Silver Award. And because of Ms. Burnett's comment on the pedestrian, I know we did, at the meeting, talked about not only the bicycle trails, but working together with the pedestrian. I think if we could just say a little to give Ms. Burnett an opportunity to, to see what you're working on and how we are all working on the same page, not, you know, transportation across the board. It's not just the bicycle friendly, but it's transportation and pedestrians across the board.
Yeah. And what you're referring to is that at the last Transportation and Land Use Committee meeting, we started to talk about the updates that we need to make to our regional bike plan that was adopted in 2015. So we know that there has been significant progress since then. And what we want to do is go in and update the maps to show where proposed facilities have become existing facilities. And that started the conversation about when will we update the bike plan? And what the discussion ended up with is, perhaps we shouldn't just be talking about a regional bike plan, we should be talking about a regional active transportation plan. So that we're actively pursuing, pursuing not only bicycle facilities but pedestrian facilities as well. And so unanimously, the committee wants to proceed with preparing that type of plan in the future. So it's a really big step forward. I know that, you know, in the past, each of the individual municipalities have really looked at pedestrian facilities individually because many times our, our individual ordinances require sidewalks be built, and bike facilities were always looked at in a more regional nature. But I think that the committee is on target where we need to look at all of this from a connectivity perspective regionally. And staff received the message, and when we draft the RFP for that next plan, we'll be looking at both components. So thanks for the reminder and letting me talk a little bit about it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on now. The next item on the agenda is 3C, Process for Implementing Recommendations from the Policing and Communities of Color Task Force Report. Doug, you want to...
Yes, thank you. Recall that in August, we did receive a report from Dr. Cunningham on the recommendations from this task force. This task force was formed last year in 2020, specifically by the State College Borough and Pennsylvania State University. They did ask the Police Chief Tyler Jolly to sit on it, but I wanted to point out that despite my request to add some more folks from Patent Township, I was told that the committee was at capacity and couldn't add any more folks. They have now moved forward in working to implement an advisory committee that they plan to create to look at implementation. I would advise the board that I, we have options. We could participate in that. I would recommend, though, that we come, we come together and form some sort of local group that will review the recommendations from the task force and look at implementing them locally for the Patent Township Police Department. I don't think, we don't need to figure out exactly what that review process looks like right now, but I would like the board to provide me some direction. I've been asked specifically by Penn State if we want to participate on the advisory board. My initial response to them was I didn't think it was in the best interest of Patent Township to do that. And I would recommend that the board support me in telling Penn State, "Thank you, but we'll, we'll, we'll do this locally on our own."
Okay, I'll just add that, that we, Patent Township, and, and has lots of experience already in reviewing police policies. And as we all know, we're, we're still continuing with those. So personally, I, I agree with our manager that we'll just add this particular study of these recommendations from this task force to our ongoing deliberations with our police chief. Other comment, board comments? Yes, Betsy, go ahead.
I wanted to get an opinion of Chief, from Chief Jolly on that.
Certainly. I'm in support with, with the manager as well. There's certain parts of the, the recommendations that are just going to come naturally for the Center Region and for Center County. All the police departments are already trained together. We share a regional records management system, so data consistency, things like that, are already going to kind of come together. And we're all looking for ways to engage the community. And those are some of the big recommendations. So I'm in support with what the manager feels on this.
It, it certainly makes sense to me to follow the manager's suggestion. And I, I think the similarity of data collection is critical. That's a decision that we can make among ourselves in concert with the university and the Borough Police. Are, were you suggesting, or are we going to still keep on the table, looking to form an advisory committee in Patent Township with the police?
Well, that's up to the board if you want to have a recommendation. We have a process. We, we've been following a process of reviewing, you know, all these...
Absolutely.
...these requested changes to our policing policy. We can just continue with that and say, when we finish with that process, the next one we're going to study are the recommendations from that task force on communities of color, and, and just continue with the process. That's one way. Another is, is the options, I think, that our manager put in here, right, is we could do a special committee, an ad hoc committee, or are there other ways that we could go about that? We don't have to decide today.
Right.
All we're deciding today is our, a response to Penn State's request that we participate in their advisory group.
Right. Elliot's got his hand.
Elliot, go ahead.
I think the process that we've been going through over the last several months is fine, and I don't see the need at this time to have a separate committee or an oversight committee. I think that the, the department right now has proper oversight and is doing a good job, and that we don't need to gum things up in this manner.
Any other board comments?
I just wanted to finish...
Betsy, go ahead.
To support what Elliot said and to support what we've seen to this point, that we, the Supervisors, are not in this alone. We actually have plenty of help and expertise from our residents in Patent Township, and they usually come out to our board meetings. So I think we have a de facto committee that helps us in these, this issue.
Okay, Supervisor Rob, go ahead.
I just have, I just have one question. I'm in support with our Township manager. Is there any other municipalities that are a part of this, this, this board? Are there any, are there any other officials on the Penn State?
There, there are Borough, State College Borough officials on it. There was one...
Ferguson.
One representative, Assistant Manager from Ferguson Township was on it, but that was it.
Oh, so it's only two. Okay. I, I just didn't want us to be left out as far as if there are any other officials, so it won't look like we're, we're opposed to being a part of moving forward on this issue. I, I, I'm quite pleased that Chief Jolly is on this, this committee, more so than, you know, that we definitely trust, you know, his input and what we bring to the table to express at this committee. So I'm with you, Doug, on your recommendation. I just needed to ask that question. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other board members asking to comment. How about the public? Any public comments on this topic? Seeing none. Do you have enough information and consensus, Doug?
I believe the board has given me consensus to tell them Penn State will proceed on our own, our own. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item, Patent Township Police Department Monthly Report. Chief Jolly, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So the August Public Safety Report was included in your agenda materials. For the month, we had 186 traffic stops, we wrote 55 traffic citations, wrote three parking tickets, handled 14 criminal arrests, and our bike patrol rode 30 miles with 55 bike checks. That's down a little bit for this time of year, but we did have two of our bicycles in the shot for about three weeks getting serviced. So I'll probably see those numbers jump back up here this month. So some of the department notes, we had a 40-year-old male who was arrested for possessing a small amount of marijuana and possessing drug paraphernalia. The male was stopped for speeding, and the officer detected a strong odor of marijuana coming from the car. The officer collected numerous items of paraphernalia and a small amount of marijuana from inside the vehicle upon searching. A 20-year-old male was arrested for possession of a small amount of marijuana. Officers were investigating a disorderly conduct call for loud music. The complainant stated that the music was actually shaking their floor. Upon making contact with the resident at where the music was coming from, our officers detected odor of marijuana coming from that apartment, and subsequently, the male turned over 20 grams of marijuana to our officers. We had a 54-year-old female arrested for sale or transfer of firearms and unsworn falsification to authorities. She attempted to purchase a firearm with felony convictions on her criminal record, which precluded her from being able to legally purchase a firearm. Five arrests were made for driving under the influence, two for public drunkenness, and one for retail theft. Our officers successfully served four warrants of the 19 they attempted, and they conducted 19 vacation home checks in August. Use of force, we did use force during one incident in August. Our officers responded to the report of a male who fell in front of a business and had a head laceration. Our officers located the male lying on a sidewalk and confirmed that he had stepped off a wall, falling, and struck his head. He had visible injuries from falling, and he was under the influence of alcohol. EMS was summoned, and they arrived and were going to transport the male to the hospital for further assistance. The male, though, became combative in the back of the ambulance, and our officers were asked to help restrain the male by holding down his arms and legs. EMS personnel actually received permission to sedate the male from the ER doc due to his combative behavior in order to transport him safely. There was no injuries reported by the officers, and the male only suffered the injury as a result of him falling from the wall, not from the use of force that our officers implied. Community relations, Officer Tuskovich presented Run Hide Fight to the faculty and staff as they returned back to school over at Park Forest Middle School. Myself and Officer Sunderland then helped conduct an active shooter drill at the school, and that was in preparation again for them to return on the 24th. Officer Tuskovich... Officer Tuskovich participated in Law Enforcement Appreciation Day and the parade at the Grange Fair. And then, of course, our officers were very active in the school zones as we welcomed the students and their families and teachers back to the schools here in the township. Our officers attended firearms training on the 3rd and the 16th. Officer Tuskovich had the unique opportunity to attend a debrief as our SRO of the shooting in Parkland, Florida, the school shooting that occurred there. He said it was a very interesting, very good training that he attended. Officer McCaslin attended the Rescue Task Force, which is active shooter training, and we had a couple officers attend our emergency vehicle operation course. I attended a football planning meeting, EVOC training myself, the Patton Township Business Association lunch, Center County Chiefs meeting, the community and campus, excuse me, community and campus immunity meeting, and I was also the guest speaker at the Youth Service Bureau's Board of Directors meeting here at the end of the month. A few notes from the, the public and about our officers' performance, we had an officer perform CPR and was actually using one of our AEDs a few times on a CPR call during the month of August. Sheriff Brian Samson shared a note of appreciation for all of our support with the Grange Fair, and then we had a kind of a small note of appreciation just for our staff helping out with a garbage issue from, in one of the residents here in Patton Township. Lastly, we have our record list of calls. You'll note that we had 477 calls for service in the month. That's up from July, when we handled 468. The most frequent call for service was traffic, and then secondly was our EMS assist. Just wanted to make a note too, you'll see within this, we've had a few theft from vehicle calls. So just to remind our residents, if you have your car parked outside in an open area, please just lock the doors. Generally, we find if somebody comes across a door that's open, they'll go in it. If it's locked, they keep moving on and try something else. So just please, if you can, just try to keep your doors locked if they're parked out in the driveway or out on the street. And then lastly, I just wanted to let everyone know, thanks to Sophie, our new communications person here at the township, she was able to get online reporting options for us. So now residents can report crime online to us. We've actually received probably about seven or eight submissions already, but we do have online reporting, there's anonymous tip or anonymous reporting as well, business contacts, so our businesses can send us information for, for the information we collect from them, child safety seats, you could register to have us install a seat for you, vacation home checks, and then also citizen complaint or commendation for our officers as well. So if you go to our website, though, under menu, Departments, Patton Township Police Department, forms, and all those options are right there, submit to the Google form, and we'll be back in contact with you. So, very happy to get that out there.
Great.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Yeah, very exciting.
Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, Pam, go ahead.
Are you getting any complaints on the Chick-fil-A traffic now that everybody's back?
Yes, it has increased a little bit since, since the student traffic has come back. So our officers have been spending quite a bit of time trying to clear out especially the left turns. You know, we still, still are trying to educate the public about the left turn. The problem that we encounter is, you know, we'll go down there, especially during the busy times, we can clean it out and leave, and about 15 minutes later, we're back in the same boat. So it's, it's an uphill battle. Our guys are trying to do the best they can. We're documenting when we're down there, so we're kind of tracking, you know, the warnings. But yeah, it definitely has increased since the students have come back.
We can reach out to Chick-fil-A and see if they're making any progress on their plans to add a second drive-through.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Members of the public, any questions or comments for the chief? I don't see any. Thank you very much, Chief Jolly. Our next item will be Public Works 5A update on pickleball at Burnell Road Park. But before we start on that, I'm going to take the chair as prerogative to call a short recess, and so we'll recess for five minutes. Let's get started again. I'll call the meeting back to order. Next item on our agenda is 5A update on pickleball at Burnell Road Park. I believe Susan Wheeler is going to introduce this.
Let me just start, and now turn it over to Susan. I think back in July, when we last talked about this, staff had told the board that we thought we could get four pickleball courts on one tennis court, and that conversion, that turned out, when we went to the consultant, to be infeasible. So I apologize for that, and I'll let Susan go through and then talk about the other options that the consultant has devised for us. Thank you.
Susan, go ahead.
Yes, all right, you have the memo in front of you, and first we'll concentrate on the exhibits A, B, and C that are presented with regard to Burnell Road Park. You've seen Exhibit A before, which is actually the proposal to construct three new courts on the existing graded pad next to the tennis court bank in Burnell Road Park. We had looked at that previously before it was suggested by the board that we investigate conversion of existing tennis courts to pickleball. The cost of this project, a probable cost estimate for this project would be $121,144,000. So I wanted just to put that back in there because it's something you've seen, but it was not a conversion. Exhibit B, which is the conversion of one tennis court to two pickleball courts, just to further clarify what Doug brought up, originally we were talking about maybe being able to have four pickleball on one tennis court, but the requirement of having the 12-foot distance from the new proposed fence line interior to the bank has to be maintained in order to create a safe distance between the edge of the tennis courts and the fencing. So that reduced the amount of area that we had available in what would be considered the one tennis court footprint, which would only allow the placement of two pickleball courts. The cost of that conversion would be $34,854. And so when we looked at that and saw it would only be two, we asked our design consultant to consider what we could do if we converted two of the tennis courts. And if you convert two of the tennis courts to pickleball, which would be Exhibit Three, Exhibit C, pardon me, we would be able to play six pickleball courts in that space. And then I guess, again, we would have to have the interior fence line. The cost for that conversion would be $66,303. So we looked at all of those, and then also looked at whether or not there's any possibility of court conversion in this construction season. We explored that with the Co-Stars contractor, who we could be able to work with, and also what the process would be like if we went to open bid through Penn Bid. And we're so late in the season that whatever is decided is something that will have to take place during the 2022 construction year, because we're too late in the season for the placement of the acrylic surface and the temperatures that are required for it to cure properly. I will probably leave it at that unless you have questions, and then we won't go on to the rest of the memo and the next exhibits until after you've had a chance to talk about these possibilities and, and pose questions you might have.
Yeah, let's, let's stick with Burnell Road Park right now.
Yes.
Okay. Comments, questions? Supervisor Tease, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you for your good analysis of this. My question involves the construction time. With the plan going out for bid in January, with the hope that construction might start as early as the spring, in that bidding process, can one encourage that it goes out in the spring? And if, I realize contractors are sometimes at the mercy of the weather and unpredictability, but once construction begins out there, how long, from your prior experience with, working with contractors, how long would that construction take if they were able to start by May the 1st, for instance? How long might that construction take at Burnell Road Park?
Well, I think if you're looking at the conversion, of course, it depends on whether or not you're converting one tennis court to two pickleball or two courts to six. The main thing is going to be the installation of the fencing that's interior to the existing fencing around the tennis court bank, and it really has to do with the ability to be able to pull the existing posts and reset asphalt in those spaces, in those voids, and then drill in new posts, and then also the placement of the acrylic surface, which is going to be temperature dependent. So when we did the conversion of the tennis courts to pickleball in Green Hollow, that overall process was probably about a month. So I would expect it could be in that same timeframe, weather permitting, and making sure that the temperatures were such that the acrylic surface could be placed and cured at that time.
Yeah, I would be hoping for the six courts. That would be, I'm supporting Exhibit C, so conversion to six courts might take a month or two at the most, perhaps, depending on weather and other things.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Elliot, go ahead.
I agree with the six courts idea and to start as early as possible in the spring. I don't know if the asphalt could be even done this fall, but it's disappointing that we can't get it, get it started since we know that there's a need. I know you've been working to get it done, and so, I mean, it's not a complaint, it's just that I'd like to see, I'd like to see us get it done as quickly as we can.
Yeah, we did ask the Co-Stars contractor whether or not they could add another project this fall, and they're completely booked up and have no spaces for any new projects for this fall. Even with the asphalt, I think you had bid it as one project. So asphalt, meaning that you would pull the existing posts and place those voids or put asphalt in those voids or, or stone and asphalt and then have to drill the new posts. Normally, they would want to do it all in one bell soup and not split it between seasons.
Is there any way to, to do whatever paperwork is necessary so that we'll have our best shot to get it started in the spring?
There is, once there's a decision reached on what you want to do.
Okay. I support, as Anita said, the six courts.
Any other supervisors' questions? Then let's move on to public comments. Any members of the public, either here in the room or on Zoom, wish to make a comment?
You might remind that it's just, the comments are specific to Burnell Road Park this time.
Yeah, the comments are only on the Burnell Road Park at this point. Yes, identify yourself and where you live.
Yes, my name is Al Ronato, and I'm a resident of the community. Has the Board of Supervisors or the contractor conducted any wind surveys out at Burnell?
No.
No. So pickleball's a sport that can be rendered unplayable in the wind.
We're, we, we know we need wind screens out there.
Wind screens, but, and, okay, so a follow-up question then would be, with respect to the existing tennis courts, does, does the, does the Board of Supervisors, Board of Supervisors have any data on the usage at the tennis, tennis courts?
No.
No. So we're just
Nothing, just anecdotal.
Right. So anecdotally, I think it's understood that the tennis courts are not used hardly at all, and I'm wondering if we can
I don't, we wouldn't say that. We would say
You wouldn't say that?
We couldn't tell you.
You couldn't, okay. So is that something you guys are considering doing in terms of collecting data with respect to usage?
At this time, no.
It's not?
No.
Okay. So we're going to spend taxpayer money without knowing?
All, all the information that the board has, the information that was in the, the information that was provided in the agenda, okay? So the consultant report we just reviewed, that's all the information that the board has. It's all the information the township has.
Do you, do you have a statement you wish to make?
No, I was just asking questions specifically about the Burnell location. Just given, you know, given the demand for the sport and the lack of facilities in town, and the fact that it sounds like we're, it sounds like the Green Hollow courts are not long for this world, I just want to make sure that we're not plowing taxpayer dollars ultimately into a site that won't be usable given wind conditions at the site. And if it's determined that the site is a good site, then we need to know if the tennis courts are actually being used. If they're not being used at all, then perhaps we can convert three of the courts to pickleball courts.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any other people wish to comment? Anita, I'll get to you next, but go ahead. Introduce yourself and where you live.
Wayne Wall, I live in Tough Trees, and specifically, I, I do have a statement, much like my predecessor there. Pickleball can seriously be rendered unplayable in windy conditions, and I realize you recognize the need for wind mitigation. One, I don't think that's been factored into the cost. Nothing I saw on the cost proposals factored in that wind mitigation. An additional And additionally, that wind mitigation, to make it effective, to make those courts playable on the same basis with which we're playing at Green Hollow, will require an additional height increase to get the wind mitigation that's required to play at Burnell. I've played at Burnell. When it's windy, you cannot play there, we just leave. If the wind picks up, we just walk away because it's not a playable court. So I would just ask that we look carefully at what the wind mitigation cost is going to be because we are going to have to raise the court height or the fence height and we are going to have to pay for that wind screens and those are not cheap. I think they were around $12,000. Well, I don't want to say that, they were in the thousands of dollars for the YMCA screens.
Can I ask, I just want to ask a question of the manager. Where does the cost difference break down or the cost responsibility between Patent Township and the Center Region Parks and Rec Department?
It's 100% on Patent Township.
But it's the Parks and Recs Department who will be putting up the wind screens.
Well, let's ask Ms. Wheeler, do you have any information on wind screens, Susan?
I don't, actually, there was wind screens that were built into the Exhibit A pricing. And actually, it was felt that the fencing on that side would be 10-foot high with wind screening, with the wind screens. Now, the tennis court fence height, I think, is 12 or 14 feet and Parks and Rec has already installed wind fencing on that side.
Yes.
There may be a need for additional wind screening if it's felt that the, I think the screen isn't from grade to the top of the fencing, it's a central portion, but I think we have a couple Parks and Rec people on who could answer that question.
So we'll double check that. I don't, Jim, I think Jim Carpenter's on. Jim, do you have, do you know about wind screens? Or Pam?
Pam's here, yeah.
Hi, you guys, this is Pam. I do not have that information in front of me. The wind screens that were installed at Burnell this year actually came from a donation. If it was something that was going to be needed, we would need a budget for that and we're in the budget process right now. Jim may have updated costs, I know he's on the call right now or he may be looking for them, but it's not something we've accounted for in our budget at this moment.
So for Exhibit A, they estimated $7,600 for wind screening, so let's assume we might have to add that amount to C or D if we do that, so.
Yes, and that would have been along the length of, that's a little bit longer than the dimension of either the one or two tennis courts. But the height of the fencing exists on the existing tennis fencing.
We'll double check and make sure that gets factored in and update the board. But I don't think, in terms of magnitudes of cost, it's not going to change the, doesn't-
No.
You can add that to each of B and C if you need to.
Okay.
Screens that are there now are actually on the short side and you would need wind screens on the long side, which would take care of both tennis and pickleball.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Anita, go ahead.
Yes, I see Mr. Von Tisch is on the Zoom as well and I was going to speak to some history that I learned from Mr. Von Tisch, that it used to be that the pickleball playing happened at Burnell Road Park. And I understand from some prior emails that there were like 40, 50 people who regularly played there. Now, just anecdotally, I was there on Labor Day weekend, all four courts were filled. By the time we got over to have our picnic, they were down to two courts. The other folks had finished their games and left, but one of those was pickleball players, one of those was tennis players, who said that the wind screen, at least for the tennis, was being very helpful. Probably our Parks and Recreation Director Pam Salakengas can speak more to the popularity increase for tennis, that I've gone out often to Burnell, we have a geocache out there and we check it often, and I do see the courts being used. So, but again, that's anecdotal, but I would yield to Mr. Von Tisch for his expertise as the pickleball ambassador.
Thanks, can you hear me okay?
Before we get to you, let me finish with the supervisors. If they have questions and then I'll take comments from the public. Elliot, go ahead.
I like all the, I like all the questions that are being asked and I assume that the consultant would have addressed some of these. I didn't read the report myself and wouldn't be expected to because I'm not an expert on this, but I would also want to use the people that play the most and have offered us suggestions in the past to, I'll bet they would be willing to volunteer to be consultants on this so that we wind up with the best product. So you don't want to just rush ahead just because we might have the funding for it. I think we want to get these things solved and then go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to Mr. Von Tisch, go ahead, you have the floor. Tell us where you, where you live.
Yeah, I live in Harris Township.
Thank you.
The opportunity, I wanted to make two comments. I've probably played at pickleball at Burnell Park over 100 times and I've also been out there numerous times for clinics that we do through Center Region Parks and Rec. I don't believe that wind is that much of a negative factor that we shouldn't consider that as a viable option. I think it's perfectly viable to play pickleball there. If we had wind screens, I think so much the better, that would help. I know a little bit, having just worked on the project at the YMCA regarding wind screen cost, that's a five-court facility with the courts laid side by side and the, we'll add costs to, add wind screens to any court, of course. Those are custom printed at the Y and the total cost was around $3,000.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Go back to now the board. Is there someone on the board wishes to make a motion on one of these options? Anita, go ahead.
Yes, I move that we, the board approved moving on Exhibit C, converting two existing tennis courts to six pickleball courts at Burnell Road Park for an estimated cost of $66,303 with a goal of going out for bid in January 2022, urging construction to begin as early in the spring as weather and other conditions permit.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
I will, I will second.
Betsy Whitman seconded.
I will second it.
Okay, and board members, discussion?
Pam, Pam, hello.
Oh, go ahead, Pam, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
I just want to know, do we add the wind screen cost of the $3,000 onto this?
Well, my understanding is that what Susan Wheeler has given us is a estimate, it's a projection, and we've basically given instructions to, to the manager and Susan Wheeler that to incorporate wind screen costs in terms of developing a more accurate financial proposal. So-
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think that Supervisor T's motion excludes future alterations or amendments of the, of the cost estimate based on more accurate figures.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Whitman, go ahead.
Great, thanks, yeah, a couple of things. The first speaker, you mentioned that you were concerned that we perhaps hadn't looked at the bigger picture out there and so you were thinking of maybe if we analyzed the play rates across the region, tennis versus pickleball, that we might decide to go with slightly different, design more enthusiastic or more expansive design for pickleballs. Is that, do I remember correctly?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I just asked if the work had been done.
Right, thanks. And I just, I want to address that because I think it's, it's an appropriate question, but I also am looking at our budget, our Patent Township budget, and know that if we do this now, it doesn't preclude doing something in the future, you know, to those other two tennis courts. And my concern at this immediate point is to get something in the drawing board as quickly as possible so that we can get courts that are workable, usable. I'm concerned about the wind, I'm relieved to know that we have those wind screens in the process and who knows, we may get some tree planting. There are some trees that grow very fast, a red oak grows pretty, grows fast compared to a white oak, yada, yada. So there are ways to solve that and I recognize that we're coming off a legacy of having made a decision, which I believe is a wrong decision, and had I known when the decision was, had I known what I know now when we made the decision then, I wouldn't have made it. So I'm very cautious going forward, but I don't want to err on the side of perfection. We need to get moving. So thank you for your insightful questions on that.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the motion? Okay, the motion is to go with option Exhibit C, converting two existing tennis courts to six pickleball courts at the Burnell Road Park. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No one opposed, so the motion carries. Now, as far as funding, the manager recommends that we utilize the existing cash reserve and Parkland Acquisition and Improvement Reserve Fund. There was a spreadsheet included of the current status of that fund and there seems to be ample, ample money available in that fund. So supervisors, any objection to utilizing that funding source?
No objections, no objections from me.
Okay, no, no objection, so the supervisor has his instructions on that. All right, next item on the agenda will be update on pickleball at Green Hollow.
Supervisor Trino, I just have a quick question on the plan for the Burnell Park courts. There, I didn't, this is the first time I've seen this exhibit, was there, was there a divider line between the two rows of courts? Divider line, was there like a fence built in between the two rows?
Yes, the design includes a fence between pickleball courts and the tennis courts.
No, that's not what I'm referring to. I'm referring to the two, there's two rows of three courts. Is there a line between the baseline of one row and the baseline of the other?
There's, there's the drawing.
Right, so there's not.
There's no fence there.
There needs to be some, I mean, you can't have, you can't play pickleball without having a, you can't, this, this current layout doesn't work. There has to be some kind of divider fence to stop the balls from the top row of courts going into the bottom row of courts. Otherwise it becomes hazardous, people step on balls, ankles get hurt, so on and so forth.
Thank you for your caution and your, your comment is noted by the manager and Susan Wheeler.
Susan Wheeler, yeah.
Any, okay, we're moving on to the next item, update on pickleball at Green Hollow Park. Now, the way I want to do this is Supervisor T's has proposed a motion, two motions actually, let's take her first motion first and let her present that. And if we have a second, then we will continue with a discussion from supervisors and also from the general public.
Five B one or five B two?
So.
Five B two.
Let me look for, okay, yeah, five B dot two is the adendum, so Supervisor T's, will you go ahead and present your first motion?
Yes, thank you very much. On July 15, as you know, our board voted to have the Green Hollow Park pickleball courts converted back to tennis courts, but only after new dedicated pickleball courts at Burnell Road Park could be secured. And tonight we have voted to have those six pickleball dedicated courts built next year. In July, I feel that the board's decision recognized our township's finding that Green Hollow, for various factors, was not a suitable park for pickleball, whereas Burnell Road Park is. I don't want to go back through the whole arguments on that, but to summarize briefly, that at the time that the board approved putting pickleball courts in Green Hollow Park, no noise study was done and the awareness of the data on pickleball was still emerging. Since that time, much data nationally has emerged, which says that because of the unique piercing sound of pickleball, that many hold a national standard, that there should be at least 350 feet and preferably 500 feet between a pickleball court and the nearest home. In Green Hollow Park, the nearest home is-
Sorry to interrupt you, Anita, sorry to interrupt you, but you, I want to restrict this to just your motion and just get a second and then you'll have opportunity to expand, expound on the rationale and so forth.
But anyway, I believe that in designating Burnell Road Park, recognizing it was a suitable park, that designating, recognizing Green Hollow was not a suitable park, was a decision that said pickleball should not be played in Green Hollow. It was left unclear at the point of the conversion of the tennis courts, there was some thought, could it be what's called a dual-line tennis court, which is what they currently have at Burnell Road Park. As you know, you can draw with a pink line on a tennis court, that you could play pickleball on a tennis court. But I'm, my motion is that any tennis courts that go into Green Hollow Park be strictly tennis courts, that they not be the dual-lined tennis courts because that really permits pickleball back in Green Hollow. And I believe the board's decision recognized that, so that's, that's my motion, that the new tennis courts at Green Hollow Park shall be strictly for tennis and not be the dual-lined tennis courts that would also allow for pickleball. That is my motion.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Thank you.
Elliot, Elliot, second the motion. All right, now, I want to proceed, we have, we have two things, we have the YSM Exhibit D of how to replace the four pickleball courts in Green Hollow Park with two tennis courts. And so that's what you see on your screen right now is the conceptual drawing and the page after that is the estimated cost, $35,786. The other thing that we also have is the results of the Green Hollow Park Pickleball Hours of Play survey. And I'd like to ask Susan Wheeler to go ahead and present or summarize these results from the survey before we have open discussion. So we'll, so we'll all be aware of this data. Okay, Susan, go ahead.
All right, I think that everyone has the attachment as part of their packet. I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights, just to go back and give you some background. It was at the request of the board that staff developed a survey to ask about hours of play of pickleball in Green Hollow Park. We developed a survey in Survey Monkey, which was opened on Monday, August 2nd and closed on Monday, August 30th, which meant that there was five weeks of data collection. The survey asked very simple questions about where people lived and their interest in hours of play at the park. And we had a section asking demographics, which is something that we do on every survey that we put out, just so that we can see how our demographics may or may not be changing through the township. In this demographic, you can see that I have broken it out between the Patent Township respondents and all- respondents and all, and all respondents. Specifically, I did that to be able to look at the Patent Township respondents' data and look at the past park surveys that we've done to see if any of the age demographics are significantly changing through all of the parks surveys that we've done in the past. As it turns out, the numbers that we have on this demographic chart for Patent Township reflect the same data that we collected in 2020 when we were updating our parks and bicycle pedestrian path plan. When we opened up the survey, we emailed out direct emails to a number of different people to let them know that the survey was available. It went out to the Public Works listserv, which consists, I think, of probably about 600 email addresses. The Board of Supervisors listserv, which is a couple hundred or a few. The addresses of all of the people who were attending pickleball meetings in the past, and also posted notice of it on various Township Nextdoor apps. So it went out to a large number of people, and it was sent out, those notices were sent out multiple times. And then we just waited for the data to be collected. When the, the survey closed, we had 204 surveys that were submitted. Of those 204 submitted surveys, 65% of them were from Patent Township residents, and 35% were from non-Patent Township residents. And I was kind of, thought it was important, and when we looked at developing a survey, thought it was important that we would collect data on all the pickleball opinions on hours of play, but also to look at how that was broken down between the Patent Township residents and the non-Patent Township residents. In summary, to answer the question, which was the most asked question, which is what we're trying to find out, was actually what hours of play did people want? And if you look at the, the next page in this summary, what it shows is that the majority of players on Monday through Friday would prefer play between 2:00 and 5:00. And then second to that would be 11:00 a.m. in the morning until 2:00 p.m. And then approximately 50% of the respondents would like 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. if it was daylight permitting. On Saturday and Sunday, the preferred hours changed slightly in that 53% of the respondents were interested in play from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. About 50% wanted to play from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00. And it switched on the weekends at 45% wanted to play in the morning from 11:00 a.m. to 11, 8:00 a.m., pardon me, to 11:00 a.m. I looked at this as being rather significant, because in each of these instances, except for the Saturday morning play, which is 45%, it shows 50% or more of the users really wanted to have hours of play during those times on all of those days. Also significant to that is that from all the respondents, the number of, percentage of respondents who wanted no hours of play on any day of the week ranged overall from 11% to 15% of the total responses. There's a summary when we looked at this, of all the respondents, 58% of the people did play pickleball in Green Hollow Park. 42% did not play pickleball in Green Hollow Park. When we looked at the Patent Township respondents, we found that 38% played pickleball at Green Hollow and 62% did not. Also, I parsed it out to look at, of all the Patent Township residents, whether they played pickleball or not, who wanted no hours of play and who wanted some hours of play regardless of whether or not they played pickleball. And of that data, it showed that 19% wanted no hours of play in Green Hollow Park, and 81% wanted some hours of play in Green Hollow Park. So I think I'll stop reciting numbers and allow you to ask any questions that you might have to this point.
Okay. What I wish to do now is we're going to save till a little bit later, after some discussion, decision about setting hours of play starting November 1st, which was one of the reasons for this, this survey. And the reason I want to do that is because we have still quite, quite a lot of differences of opinion regarding pickleball play period at, at Green Hollow Park. Anita Ties has already presented a motion to basically can, to confirm that we're, to confirm that we would convert the existing pickleball, pickleball courts at Green Hollow Park to two tennis courts. And so this, what I'd like to do is open this up for discussion on her particular motion. And I will preface it by saying we have received quite a lot of responses, both from people who submitted written comments as part of the, of the survey that Susan Wheeler just mentioned, and also emails that we have received separately, which copies, which we, you have copies of in the agenda packet. What I want to do first is to allow the members of the Board of Supervisors to speak, and then after that, we'll have comments from, from the general public. What I also, and specifically requesting, knowing this, this may take a, this discussion here is going to take a long time, probably. If you have already submitted comments, written comments, either through the survey responses or through emails, I would appreciate very much if you don't repeat, you know, take your opportunity to simply repeat the comments you have already provided to us, because we have already read them all. We've read all of your comments. So if you have new, new comments or an expounded, you want to expound on a comment that you made that was short, that's fine. I want everyone who wants to speak to have an opportunity to do that. I'm just trying to help simplify and make more efficient this whole process. So I'll start with the supervisors. Ms. Ties, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, I will try to be brief. I appreciate, and I know that all of the members of the board appreciate the comments and the letters that we've received. There were 98 comments on the survey from those who favored pickleball. There were 23 comments from residents who did not want any hours for pickleball. We've heard from, I think, many, many residents, both within Patent Township, and it seems 35% of the survey responders were from outside the township. What this says to me is, for the pickleball players, there is a fantastic passion and interest in playing pickleball, and I believe the board has heard that, as witnessed the fact we've just approved building six new pickleball courts in Burnell Road Park. The issue that people are divided upon is whether Green Hollow Park is appropriate for pickleball play. And I'm of the belief that it is not because of the national standards, the 500 feet from homes, and the fact that Sweet Green Hollow is an amphitheater. If, in a perfect world, if it was a flat park, if we called it Green Flat Park, and homes were 500 feet away, and you could do effective noise mitigation, which you cannot because of the amphitheater effect, you know, then it would be wonderful. But the park itself, by its very geography, does not lend itself to pickleball. And I, that was, I believe, the board's decision, what are the standards that this township will maintain for what is appropriate in various parks? And as I look ahead to the future, 10, 15 years from now, the fact of the passion of the pickleball players, obviously, this is a growing sport. If pickleball were returned to Green Hollow, whether by making a dual-line court as a tennis court or actually keeping a pickleball court, I have no doubt that, that we would see the extreme use of those courts, just as happened during the early days of the pandemic, where there were hundreds, hundreds of wonderful pickleball players playing pickleball. And Green Hollow was never intended to be a regional park. If, if pickleball is returned there, I can see that down the line, the board would be asked to cut down trees, to build a big parking lot to handle all the traffic. Green Hollow, for many reasons, is not, in my belief, an appropriate park. And I wanted to show one visual, if you could put that up, Alex, because what we're asking of the residents who live closest to Patent Township, to Green Hollow, we're asking you to shift your passion and your play out to Burnell Road Park. You can do it even now. There are four dual-line courts out at Burnell Road Park. Some people don't even know where Burnell Road Park is, and I don't blame them, unless you drive out that way, it's a beautiful park. I think it's becoming one of the best regional parks, even though it's not funded as such. This is from Google Maps, and it shows, depending on time of day, that it would take 10 minutes, 10 to 13 minutes, if you were at Green Hollow, to drive out to Burnell Road Park. It would take less than that if you lived in tough trees or other areas of Patent Township. I know one of the wonderful passionate players at Green Hollow lives in Half Moon Township, and she can get to Burnell Road Park in two minutes or more. So what we are asking, and we recognize it, is that the folks who are playing at Green Hollow begin to shift your allegiance and your love of pickleball back to Burnell Road Park where it once started, where there'll be six courts. That we recognize it's a community-building sport, it's a social sport, you make great friendships, that's the place to go. And my vision for the township is that this energy will flow out to Burnell Road Park. That's the appropriate park. To keep it in Green Hollow is going to aggravate. The noise aggravates, the traffic, it's not an appropriate park. So, and looking at the, and we're not speaking of hours yet here, and I would hope we could even defer that decision for another meeting, but in terms of the board recognizing the needs of the pickleball community, right now, there are 32 hours of play permitted. Given that there are four courts, that's 128 court hours. Given that four players can play on each court, that's 512 player hours per week that you can currently play at Green Hollow. Many, many opportunities. So that's why I believe that we need to clarify that the tennis courts at Green Hollow will be strictly tennis courts. And let's take the passion and commitment to pickleball out to Green Hollow, out to Burnell Road Park, it's a 10-minute drive away. Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot Abrams, go ahead.
I think when we talked about this during the summer, there are very few, did I, did I mute myself? Am I unmuted?
You're good.
You're fine, we can hear you.
Okay. Now, there, there are very few park uses that attracted this as much objection as we had earlier this summer to the current location of the pickleball courts. And so that's why we began to look at, what can we do differently? And how can we protect the name until we get that, the new ones built? And so that was, that prompted us to say that we're going to build the new ones at Burnell Road Park. And at that time, pickleball would be stopped at Green Hollow Park, but it wouldn't be stopped until those other courts are ready. And obviously, we can change our minds whenever we want, and that, that happens in all levels of government. But I don't see the reason at this point to change it, because what else is new? We're going to have the new courts. The only thing I heard tonight that I'm worried about is to make sure that we don't make a mistake with the new courts of ignoring some input that we're getting. For example, is the windscreen going to be sufficient? Let's, if, if there are some residents that have some good information to bring forward that question this, let's get that out of the way before we spend any money on this. I don't think it will take that long to figure this out, but I think we need to go ahead. But I don't see, I don't see any reason to reverse what we did earlier in the summer. If we didn't, we weren't building new courts, or if we decided it was too expensive, and that there was no other thing other than to have the existing courts, that might be a reason to, to change our minds. But I, I don't see it at this point.
Okay, thank you. Elliot, any other supervisors who wish to make a comment before we get general comments from the public? That's it, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, thanks, Dan. I wanted clarification first, and maybe we need a, sorry, clarification, on whether, what Elliot Abrams just referred to as our previous decision by, I believe it was about a four, at least a four to one vote, not to have pickleball at Green Hollow Park. And if that is a given, which I hope it is, then I think, even though a lot of responses came in requesting that we have pickleball at Green Hollow Park, and I respect those views, but I do not believe that we need to hear those views. We, we have heard them in, in writing. And so I would like to figure out if that is our baseline by which we are going forward with our discussion tonight.
What do you mean by a baseline?
Well, are we, is, is the decision of whether to have pickleball, allow pickleball at Green Hollow Court, back on the table?
We, at the time, we had this discussion, was it last month, I think? We didn't have any survey results. So now we have survey results.
Okay. So it is on the table. I just wanted to.
So that's why I took the opportunity, I guess my chair's prerogative.
Okay.
To allow more public discussion about this. But Anita Ties' motion clearly reflects the, the will of the board back in August. Yes.
If, and if we vote on that, it would. So I would just like to suggest procedurally that we have a vote so that we determine what the disposition, disposition of the board is on the return of pickleball to Green Hollow, and based on that outcome, deciding whether to have additional discussion on that particular issue.
I, we have a motion on the floor with a second, and I, procedurally, we have to, we, we have to vote on that, but we have to have discussion on the motion. So I don't want to shut off all discussion, especially from people who are here to, to speak to that motion from the public. So that's, that's my view as chair. I'm taking a prerogative that let's, let's have complete discussion. It's open, it's transparent, we're letting everyone have a voice.
Fair enough.
About this particular motion.
Fair enough, yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to get that out.
All right, then, let's open it now for public comments. People in the, let's have people in the audience come to the podium. Remind us who you are, please.
Yes, my name is Al Renato, I'm a resident of College Township. I want to thank you Supervisor Trevino for not shutting down the discussion and keeping it open. I think that was noble of you. First question, can the Board of Supervisors, Supervisors provide guidance on the process for filing the Freedom of Information Act? Request for all records, notes, emails, minutes, and data pertaining to the pickleball issue at, at Green Hollow? Who do we contact for that?
The manager.
Great, thank you. Second question, outside of litigation, what recourse do taxpayers have with respect to government misconduct and abuse of funds? For example, if Green Hollow were a Commonwealth-owned and operated park, it's my understanding that citizens could contact the Pennsylvania Office of the State Inspector General to pursue that avenue. And I'm curious, is there a comparable authority for Patent Township to which taxpayers could pursue an appeal based on what you guys decide?
I'm going to say no.
So there's no accountability?
This, this is your accountability.
This is the accountability right here.
If you lived in Patent Township, you could vote us in or vote us out.
Right, so it's the vote. We speak with our votes, that's it. There's no accountability for tax. There's no accountability for tax dollars being spent and how it's spent. Okay?
Right here.
Thank you. With respect to Green Hollow specifically, what metrics does CRPR and/or the township use to measure the success of specific recreation projects? And by those metrics, how does the pickleball project at Green Hollow compare? Because I think it's pretty inarguable that it's one of the most successful projects in CRPR history. And I'm curious what metrics you guys are using to make this determination?
We don't have a set metric.
So no metrics. Okay, do you guys have any statistics regarding park usage as a whole prior to the construction of the pickleball courts and then post-construction? So any, like, foot traffic or any park usage statistics before and then after?
The township doesn't have statistics, I don't think. As far as CRPR.
Okay. So no statistics.
Pam Salakangas can answer that question. Can we have her come in and?
She's on, she's on the call.
We've talked, I think Susan Wheeler's talked before about the process they went through to survey people about what improvements would be appreciated in Green Hollow Park.
He's talking about.
I'm just talking about general foot traffic. It's not, it's, let's just move on here, actually. Did the Board of Supervisors conduct any surveys of nearby residents to determine a specific complaint zone?
Specific complaint zone?
If yes, what is the number of residents, residences within the radius of the pickleball courts that have an issue? Is there a specific number of residences?
Information was included in the survey that we were discussing.
Well, I missed that. What was the, what was the specific number of residences?
You're going to have to submit those questions to us.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't know that. So I guess.
The information's available.
Oh, it is available. But you just don't know it now, okay, thank you. Does the Board of Supervisors believe that a small number of private residences should be able to dictate the activities that take place for the entire township and broader community within a public park?
I think that's a statement of your opinion.
No, it was a question.
No, we're not going to answer that question.
You're not going to answer, okay. So are you, is the board concerned about what kind of precedent this could set for other public parks? Say, the Park Forest Pool, which also has private residences that board of that park, as do most private parks in the broader state college community? Is that a concern for the board?
It's not come up as far as I'm concerned.
So you're not concerned, you're not concerned about?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying we have not had any complaints, as far as I'm aware, of neighbors of Park Forest Pool, so.
Okay, but, and with respect to the broader precedent issue?
We're always considering precedent in every one of our decisions.
Right.
So that's automatic.
Okay. And we don't think, the board doesn't view this as a dangerous precedent to set? To state the obvious, there's obviously a small number of residences here that is determining the use of public green space.
No, we determine the use.
Well, you're determining, you're determining the use, that's correct. But at whose bequest?
You simply, again, stated an opinion that you have.
Well, I'm trying to ask questions. If it's coming across as opinion-based, I apologize.
You used a value-laden word. You said "dangerous." So that's, you're really stating your opinion. And I already answered your question.
But if you think it's dangerous, if you don't think it's dangerous, then, so if I think it's dangerous, then you think it's not dangerous?
We're not going to have an argument here. Please make your statements and then allow other members of the public to make their statements.
Is my time expired?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Any other members present who wish to address us? And then I'll go to the ones with their hands raised on Zoom. Yes, Ms. Burnett, go ahead.
I didn't realize some people. Valerie Burnett, Top Trees Avenue. I just have to speak as a person who has come to numerous meetings. I respect the process that occurs in Patton Township. I recognize that we are a very diverse community, and yet I see time and time again a very deliberative process. I appreciate all the parks that we have, and they all have different flavors. And I think it's amazing, the enthusiasm for pickleball. And I just appreciate the process that everyone here has gone through. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Now, I'll go to the Zoom. Raise hands, I think Kelly Forrest was first. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kelly Forrest, and I am from the borough. I'm new to pickleball, I started in February. But I want to just talk about data right now. And I, and the survey that you guys sent out in July, you know, in August, really happened after the Y pickleball courts started, opened up, right? So I'll just give you an example of the data. Before I went to, before the Y courts opened up, I played five to seven days at Green Hollow. And when I played, there were about 15 to 25 people playing there when I went. After July, when the Y courts were open, I've only played at Green Hollow about 15 times. I've been playing at the Y because I have a Y membership, so I had that courtesy to do that. When I went to the, so again, before, 15 to 25 people were there when I was there. Now, when I go, I'm the only group that's playing. About half the times I was going. The second thing is, if I wasn't the only group that's playing, they were college students who were from around the area. And I was actually playing with the instructor of these college students. So they were just trying to figure out the game, right? So college students who also can't afford to go to the Y. I also saw families there. Families who met there, they have little kids, and the little kids are playing pickleball, right? This is what a park's for, at least in my opinion. So since the Y courts have opened, Green Hollow is still being used. But not to the extent that you guys started this discussion a long time ago, right? We're not, there's not 100 people playing in this courts every day. There is very minimal amount of courts. And now that you reduce the hours, right? Now there's even less people, because I can't play when your hours are open. I'm working at those times, so I, and then when it gets dark, I really can't play. Let's also talk about COVID. COVID is, we want to experience activities that are outdoors. So COVID is not going away. Pickleball is a great opportunity for us to explore playing, being social in a safe place, right? The Y gives us one place, Green Hollow gives us another place, right? So now we're good. And people are using it, but again, not to the extent that we had this discussion happen a long time. And the third thing, and this is from Valerie, who I really enjoyed listening to her comment as a Patton Township person. What are the effects on the environment? You guys talk about, you know, going to Burnout. Well, Burnout's far away in terms of, like, where people are. This park is easy to walk to. These people, this park is easy to bike to. And I see those families, and they were walking and biking to this place. And now you're going to take them in a car and take them another seven, eight miles outside of State College. Again, this puts a cost on our carbon footprint. You're building something that doesn't need to be, well, I think the six courts are great. There are over 100 new pickleball players since all these courts have opened up. And I think it's a great avenue to be social. And that is my end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for staying under five minutes. I'll just remind everyone who's speaking, your time limit is five minutes. If you can speak less, that would be great. Next is Mary Bellman.
Hi, thank you. People who've been coming to these meetings know that I have spoken previously, and I will try to respect Supervisor Trevino's request to not repeat things. It's difficult, because so far, the three community members we've heard from, who are, you know, who love pickleball and want it to be at Green Hollow, are actually repeating arguments we've, you know, not arguments, reasons that we've actually already heard. And I'm, you know, and I don't want to rebut all of them. I certainly could, but I don't think that's a good use of time. So I'm just going to limit myself to really this question of the survey. I am a professor at Penn State, so that means I have a PhD, and I appreciate the work that went into the survey. But I just want to remember that this is a self-selected group of people who filled out the survey, most of whom are players, right? So it's not a statistical sample. You really can't extrapolate more from that other than how this particular group answered. I did not have every member of my household fill it out. Apparently, I could have had my children each fill it out and, you know, organize people to answer that. But I just think we need to take, I took it as really determining the hours and not revisiting this whole decision about the appropriateness of pickleball in a park where we can't abate the noise and there are many residences within 500 feet. To me, that would be the terrible precedent. Yeah, there's more things I could say. But I just think that, you know, we, the, I think the board has been trying to accommodate both pickleball players who want a place to play. And those of us who live here, frankly, we can't walk away. This is our, where we live. And so the, you know, frequent comparisons to other sports are just start to feel very old for those of us who've been attending meetings about this for months. And we're, you know, I really hope that we can move forward with this decision and support pickleball being played at Burnell, at Burnell Road Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vontish.
Yes, just wanted to add a point or two here. When we go back to when this entire discussion started, there were two major issues that I heard. One was noise, that it was excessive. And the second was traffic and the volume of people coming to the park. Well, I've been back at least twice in the last nine weeks since the Y courts opened, where I play most of the time. But I played at Green Hollow Park. And I think what we need to recognize, Green Hollow, right now, is entirely different in terms of a pickleball facility than it was before we opened the Y courts. So the challenge that I'm putting forth here is, have we not solved the noise issues by having far fewer people there, as we predicted? The second major topic that was brought up at the beginning was parking. We have far fewer people going. I think we've solved the parking problem. In the last nine weeks, people are playing more at the Y. So the question that I'm posing to the Board of Supervisors is, what harm would it be to keep some pickleball in Green Hollow Park? We've solved the noise problem. We've solved the parking problem. You have reduced traffic. And I just want to finish with one last point. In the last seven weeks, I know I've sent updates, 120 people have been to a pickleball class, between Center Region Parks and Recs and classes given at the Y. An equal number will go in September. A lot of those folks who are attending are from Park Forest, so I'm arguing on their behalf. It's people that live on the side streets that sometimes walked to the lessons that we gave there that want to see pickleball in their neighborhood. So if our goal is to keep Green Hollow Park as a neighborhood park, certainly pickleball can and should be part of that. What is the possible harm if we've solved the noise problem and the parking issue already? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have, Pam, let me get you after this next one. There's someone on an iPhone. I have no idea who this person is, so you'd have to identify yourself.
Hi, Mr. Trevino, I don't know if you're referring to me. I'm calling in from my iPhone remotely. My name is Brandon McDonough. I live on Norwood Lane. I've been attending these meetings. I appreciate my neighbor Mary's comments that she made about the commitment of the neighborhood to continue to sit in on these meetings. And I'd like to take a minute to thank Supervisor Anita for her diligence and pulling together the information that she did and the way that she's looked at this problem as larger than just the conditions pre-Y installing their courts to where it is now. I think it's really disingenuous to say that the problem is solved in any way. You know, whether the noise issues are in the stated hours of play currently, like, are the conditions better for neighbors? Yes, no doubt. Going from continuous seven days a week of play to the current conditions, as regulated as they are, it has been an improvement in the quality of life of the neighbors around Green Hollow Park. And we thank you for that. But to open this back up for discussion is not only backtracking on a decision that was made at the last board meeting, but it's also disingenuous to say that we've solved the problem by, you know, kicking the problem elsewhere. Like, you know, I think that you need to maintain your course of action and the decisions that you made at the last meeting and say, once pickleball is installed at Burnell Road, that will trigger the transfer of the courts back to tennis courts. That was the decision that was made at the last meeting. And I don't understand why all of a sudden now, there's backtracking on that. So again, I would like to support the motion, and I thank you Supervisor Anita for your thoughtful and clear statements on why your motion should carry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pam Salakangas, go ahead.
Hi, Chair. Hi, everyone. Pam Salakangas, I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for the Center Region. I just wanted to address the question posed by the gentleman in person in the audience there. That Center Region Parks and Recreation does collect data on all of its programs and special events that it runs. So the pickleball lessons that we are running in conjunction with Drew's team, we have data on. Tennis, we have data. So the league and all of the instructional programs, we collect data on. What we do not collect data on is drop-in use at all of the parks. Our parks maintenance staff are in those parks every day. Our staff are in those parks every day. But that is a fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants evaluation on what's happening at the moment. We do not have counters at our park entrances or are dropping, doing any informal valuation. So we do have data on programs and events. And if that was requested, we could provide that to you. But we do not have general drop-in use, which is most of what pickleball and tennis is, its drop-in use. I just wanted to clarify that, that we do have some data.
Thank you, Pam. Any other members of the public wish to address the board's topic on this motion? Back to the supervisors then. Any final discussion? Betsy, go ahead.
Great, thanks. So I first want to address the question that I posed to you earlier about what the, what was on the table, whether we were going to be discussing, again, opening up the discussion about whether pickleball should be in the park. And the reason I ask that is because I wanted some understanding on the decision that we made in our August meeting that Brian McDonough referred to. And I did not mean to imply that we should not be open for discussion. I just wanted to make sure that what the assumption was from a vote that we took on the last meeting. So I want to address a couple of things. And first and foremost is a concern that I know Al brought it up. And it's been brought up by a number of people who are pro-pickleball and pro-pickleball in Green Hollow Park. And that is that, sorry, that the supervisors are not being fair by letting a minority rule over the majority. And I want to be very clear about the fact that not all issues are decided by majority rule. And we have a number of them in our country. One is civil rights, one is voting rights, one is disability rights, and so on. So I just want to put that on the table. And I think we're comparing apples and oranges. I think that there's a passion for pickleball, but there is an equal passion for a certain kind of life from the residents who live in proximity. And I called a couple of those. And I called a couple of those residents right before I came here to get grounded again into some of those issues because I had read certainly a number of comments from... Well, from everybody who submitted written comments. But the vast majority were from pro-pickleball players. And the phrase that I heard was, "A unique annoyance of the ping to the brain." I've heard that from a number of people, and I've read that. And so I am using that to make my opinion on why I am not allowing the majority to determine my rule on this. Okay. Second is, I do also want to address the fact that it was not a random survey. Mary Bellman brought that up. And I get that a random survey is very expensive. I wanted to address the fact that Drew Von Teesch made. And yes, there has been a reduction of people playing in pickleball. But Drew, to your credit, you are a salesperson for this sport. And I think it's a little sort of contradictory because you talk on one hand of the enthusiasm and the numbers of people growing, and on the other hand saying, well, we've solved the problem of noise at pickle... at Green Hollow Park. So I would like to say that, no. It will continue to grow in popularity. And that is in part to your credit, in part to the credit of the sport itself. I would also like to ask a question. Or whatever, I'm going to ask it and pause for a second. So why is pickleball an issue in patent township? And the reason I'm asking is not so much why is pickleball an issue, but why is pickleball an issue in patent township? Why isn't it an issue in the borough? In College Township? In Harris Township? In Half Moon Township? It's an issue in patent township because several years ago, I forget the exact time. I was a new supervisor, so it must have been 19... Sorry. It must have been 2018. Don't mind that. And we had three or four members. I think one was Drew Von Teesch, who I didn't recognize at the time, because I didn't know you, who came and appealed to... For the Board of Supervisors to take a look, to take a chance on pickleball. And we did. No? And did Harris Township do it? Did College? Did Ferguson? No. And I think you referenced that. So, you know, why are we taking all the grief? I think we need to be taking some of the credit here, a lot of the credit. And also, I'm looking at what we're doing to Burnell Park. This is patent township. This is not money from College Township or Harris or Ferguson. And I don't begrudge them. But I think we do a pretty darn good job here in patent township. I think we've got excellent parks. I've heard that from a number of people. I know we do a lot of great things here. I won't go on. And it's not to begrudge Ferguson or College or Harris, you know? They don't maybe have the wherewithal or the lands to do that. But please, you know, take a look in the mirror. We're all working hard here. If you don't think small government is working, then I challenge anybody to run for office. In fact, be careful, because I will ask you to run for office. It is one of the most frustrating, but most... One of the most rewarding jobs I've ever done bar raising two children. So I ask you, why is this an issue in patent township? And I just want you to look at why it's not an issue across the region. So... Because we are really doing our best here. And I... Whatever we rule, whatever decision we make coming up for having pickleball courts at Green Hollow Park, I want to make darn sure that we do not make any drastic decision on Green Hollow Park until we have those courts with the wind screens or whatever... And a protective fence between the three... The sets of three courts, so that we do this right. Okay? And we're doing this right for the whole region. One other thing I did want to mention was about the environment. Yes, it is a little bit farther. For people who live in Park Forest, it's a little bit farther. You have to ride, drive there, and there's no bus. Maybe with the increased use of pickleball out in Burnell Park, we will have a dedicated bus route out there. We don't have one right now. It's a little bit of bootstrapping at this point. But I would also like to point out that the majority of people who played at Green Hollow Park would put money on the fact that they drove there, which is why we had a traffic issue, and they did not walk there. So wherever we have this, we are going to have a traffic issue. Anyway, that said, thank you all for participating on whatever side.
Okay, thank you, Betty. Betsy. Elliot, you're next.
I'd like to second Betsy's comments. I think they're excellent on what we're trying to do and the fact that we don't do it perfectly. And I find, for example, as I get older... I'm in my 70s now, and I don't do some of the activities I used to. I used to be a strong softball proponent. And then I was concerned about enough soccer fields for the kids because when our kids are in school, they play soccer. But I try to remember that at each stage of life and that each of us wants to be able to do the most number of things we can in our communities. And we want to do it safely, and we want to be happy with it. And so I think in the end, that's what we're trying to do. I don't think we're trying to be rigid. And I remember that the first time I became interested in running for supervisor was because I saw some buses getting stuck on one of our roads during a snowfall. And then I saw a report in... At the township meeting that everything had been done well. I have these pictures. I was known as a troublemaker immediately. Brought in these pictures of the buses getting stuck. And they knew that they had a troublemaker on their hands, so I was almost immediately put on a board. And, you know, I'm glad that we have people who want to hold us accountable to things. And I think we should be accountable to things. And I appreciate all the different comments. Just rambling here, but this is why these meetings can take longer. But I think that's what we decide to do when we run for these offices, that we have to listen. We have to consider everything. And then we generally will make some decisions, and hopefully they're generally the right ones in most cases. So.
Okay, thank you, Elliot. So I'll take the... Oh, Pam? Rob, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to also piggyback on the comments from my colleague, Betsy Whitman and Elliot. As I look at pickleball and the growing of it, it's on the commercials. It's on the Olympics. It's everywhere. And to say that it's not going to grow and the numbers are growing. I can't say that because the numbers are not at Green Hollow. They're reduced. The more we look at TV, the more we're seeing the commercials that are talking about pickleball, people are gravitating to that. That means more traffic. So I applaud each and every person that has commented on this issue, the pros and the cons. And I would truly like you to give this board a little credit for taking on such an issue that several of our members weren't even on the board when this was brought to the table. But we are now dealing to the best of our abilities to make the right decision. We have listened to each and every comment, and we have read each and every correspondence. And don't think that it is a fly-by-night decision by this board, because it is not. We are taking this very seriously. So as we make our decision tonight, I truly believe that we will make the decision that is right and that is fair to all. As you can't please everyone, but at least this board tried to come in the middle and address each and every one of your concerns. So to all each of my colleagues, thank you for taking the time, the effort, and to really listen to each and every person that spoke, sent letters, made phone calls as we move forward on this decision tonight. And it's not over. Pickleball is growing. It's in the future. But we also hear the neighbors. So I'm looking forward to our vote and moving forward to the new decision of making the other six courts down the road. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pam. We're going to move to a vote. I do want to say, just briefly, my own opinion, which is clearly a minority opinion on the board. I thought that... That the comments we got from the survey of the... Especially the local Park Forest residents who do play pickleball and like to go to that... Play there at that court. I thought it would... To accommodate them, we could try to save one pickleball court. In other words, put in one tennis court and leave one pickleball court, which I thought would keep the park as a community park because it would be only one pickleball court. And we wouldn't strike the tennis court for pickleball so the only possibility is one game at a time. But clearly, that's not the majority opinion on the board, so I won't take any more time with that. So let's have a vote on Supervisor T's motion that the new tennis courts at Green Hollow Park shall be strictly for tennis and not be dual-line courts that would also allow for pickleball. So let's have a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
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 I see three votes, right? Pam, Anita, and Elliot, correct? All those opposed, raise your hand and say no. Actually, no.
No. And I would like to explain, if I might, even though I seconded it, because I believe that... I believe that it's unlikely that they will be dual-lined. But if at some point down the road, if the surrounding neighbors decide they want to have pickleball, and they come to us and say they want to have it dual-lined, then I'd like to be flexible and allow that to happen. But it would be at their request.
The board can always revisit that in the future.
That is so true.
Yeah, so that doesn't preclude a future...
True, but I'm... I would not have voted that way if it would have changed the vote. That it was more...
Are you saying you want to change your vote too?
No.
No, okay. But the vote is three to two. The motion carries. So moving on from that motion, Supervisor T, do you wish to present your second motion now?
Yes, please. It's just a housekeeping motion that seeks to clarify that when the Burnell Road Park new dedicated courts open, at that point, pickleball play will cease at Green Hollow. So the motion would read that on that day that the new dedicated pickleball courts open at Burnell Road Park, that pickleball play cease at Green Hollow Park, and that the pickleball nets at Green Hollow be taken down that day and that the court area closed until construction conversion to tennis courts can begin.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Ms. Rob. So now we're open for discussion. Any board members wish to comment on the motion? And then we'll open up for general comments from the public. Elliot Abrams, go ahead.
I agree with what the motion is doing, but I think it's already included in what we had done before. And that's why I didn't necessarily want to second or vote for it. But I guess I will. But the thing is that I think that's what we said we were going to do. We're going to build the new courts. And... But until we build the new courts, pickleball can still be played at Green Hollow according to the schedule. And I believe that the survey we did for the summer, but mainly, did we make the right decision on the scheduling? I think some people wanted to play Mondays and Fridays, and others said, no, close them Monday and Friday, which is what we did. And that this was supposed to fix the scheduling problem going into the fall. The survey turned out to be more wide-ranging than we originally pictured. But I appreciate that that was done because we have more information than we had before. So I guess I'm on the fence as to whether we need this other motion, but I'll go for it.
Okay. Any other board members wish to comment? Yes, Supervisor T, go ahead.
The intent was that, say, for instance, the Burnell Road courts are finished, but there's a construction delay in converting Green Hollow back to tennis of a couple of months or something. This just clarifies, again, it's an attempt to shift the vision and the future to have folks go out to Burnell Road Park to know that at that time, that those six new dedicated courts come online, that pickleball play at Green Hollow will cease. And recognizing that the dual-line courts at Burnell Road Park, you can play out there anytime, even now. You can play daylight hours on four dual-line tennis courts at Burnell Road Park. But when the new dedicated ones come on board, then pickleball play would officially cease at Green Hollow. That was the intent.
Thank you. General public, comments from general public? Anyone present wish to address the board? Identify yourself and where you live, please.
Wayne Walt Toftrees. I would just say that I understand the board's focus to shift out to Burnell, if that is going through. I would just say that having those courts sitting empty is a waste of a resource. And why can't we have eight courts for a little while until you start construction on the tennis courts? Otherwise, there's going to be nothing there because it may be six months. You may get into the winter months, and there's a delay on when you can convert them. And then it's just a wasted resource and a wasted park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present wish to address the board on this? Okay. On Zoom now, Mr. Garcia, go ahead. Do you have the floor? We're not hearing you. Are you speaking? I see you unmuted yourself, but we don't hear anything. Maybe your microphone is not functioning. Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia. We're not hearing anything here. Any other members of the public wish to make comment? Okay. Let's go ahead and have a vote on the motion then. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye. Four votes. Anyone... Any opposed?
Nay.
One. So motion carries four to one. Now let's move to the final thing on this. It would be consideration of hours of play at Burnell Road Pickleball Courts starting November 1st. And you've seen the results of the survey, you know, and the breakdown in terms of different times of day. Is there anyone on the board who wishes to change the current status? Which the current status is... Which the current status is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from, what is it, 10 to 5? No. Seven, nine to seven, right? Anita?
Tuesday, it was 10 to 1 and 4 to 7.
That's the current?
Tuesday, yeah.
10 to 1, 4 to 7. So that's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, correct?
Yes.
And then Monday, Friday is from?
Close, but I would like to, if we're going to talk change in hours, I have, I would like to see Monday be insisted.
I was just reminding what the current status was. And so now is your opportunity to suggest some changes. Go ahead, Supervisor T.
Well, and I'm wondering if we should be deciding this tonight or if we could have a little more time to study those survey results more. They came out right before the Labor Day weekend. Some of us were on vacation over the Labor Day weekend. I personally would like more time to pour over the survey results and maybe offer some options that could be discussed at the next meeting to give the public a chance of, because we're looking at, starting November 1st anyway, so that, I personally would like more time. But if the board wants to talk on it tonight, I've got some suggestions to make.
Yeah. Betsy, then Elliot. Go ahead, Betsy.
I'd like to second Anita's suggestion that we defer final decision on this to another time.
Okay. Elliot, go ahead.
I think we should allow it on at least Mondays and cut the hours back on November 1st in the evening when it's going to be dark. Most of the plant has put lights there, which I haven't heard. But sunset is long before 7 o'clock in beginning of November. We go back to standard time in addition. So the other thing is if we're going to wait till the next meeting in September to decide this, why don't we make the change October 1st? What's the reason to hold up?
Okay. Yeah, we have requests to delay decision. And your suggestion is, well, if we're going to delay it, why not make the change? If there's going to be any changes, October 1st, that, we can decide that when we revisit this. Pam, do you have any objection to delaying this?
No, no. And I, 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 on maybe opening up Monday, but, you know, moving forward for October.
Sure, we can have that discussion. I tend to agree with Anita about postponing a final decision on hours of play since we have plenty of time. So we'll, do you want to revisit this in two weeks at our next board meeting? I see one head nod, yes.
Please, yes.
Two, three? All right. We'll put this back on the agenda, just hours of play. Moving on.
Mr. Chair, if I might, just we move to 5D. Mr. Coons has been sitting here for two and a half hours.
Oh.
And we'll come back to 5C.
5D?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Request for additional funding for Burnell Road, Fox Hill Road intersection improvements.
As I noted in the, in the agenda, the developers, the adjacent property where the Nittany Valley Sports Center is and the other new developments that are going in there have submitted a request to ask the board to consider granting additional funding to this project. As you recall, we entered into a public-private partnership with Decibel Partners to revise and improve this Burnell Road-Fox Hill intersection, change it into, change it into what we've been calling a standard T intersection as opposed to what it was before, somewhat confusing for people from out of town, especially coming from the airport. This work was required as part of the development that was going on out there. Decibel Partners also includes the Nittany Valley Sports Center, the owner of that facility. As you recall, we've done, we supported the Nittany Valley Sports Center development through sponsoring a couple of different economic development loans, or not loans, but grants from the state and from Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. And we also entered, have been working closely with Decibel Partners on this intersection, understanding that it was going to be a much more expensive project than a single developer was probably capable of doing. And if that we didn't participate, it probably was never going to get done. And then that cast a question is, you know, what's going to happen to the adjacent property? But they did step up. They did enter into an agreement with us. They did, we'll say they did agree to cover all additional costs. I will note that they agreed to that, and then the cost went over and above what anybody thought we were going to get into. Not only did we run into over $200,000 of additional work that was due to unstable soils, and these soils were actually found under the existing road. After the existing pavement was pulled off, they'd take a truck and run it across there, and we'd end up with ruts that were eight, 10 inches deep. So all that material had to be excavated. Shot rock had to be hauled in from a quarry. So it's quite, quite expensive. And, you know, it was done according to PennDOT's regulations. It's PennDOT Road, and they had their inspectors out there. Also, I know the developers ran into additional. If you look at the chart that's there on the screen under overhead utility relocations, you see under Patent Township, there was $124,000. That's what we all thought going into the project it was going to cost to move the power line that had to be moved. Well, at the end of the day, Decibel Partners had to put in another $115,000 with those entities, Verizon and West Ben Power, to finish that work. So beyond that, they did, they have spent a lot more money than anybody expected. Again, we've been working closely with them and with Nittany Valley Sports Center throughout this process. I think Nittany Valley Sports Center is going to be a wonderful addition to the township. They started running basketball tournaments out there this summer. I stopped in one day and watched for a while. I was amazed at how good some of those 13, 14-year-old kids are. Now they're six feet tall. They've been probably been playing like that for their lives. But I think they're going to, they're really drawing in another, you know, tourism or business aspect of the community where they're filling up a lot of hotel rooms, buying a lot of meals in here during the seasons when those businesses aren't their busiest. So they've asked for us consideration for helping with that cost for $230,000. If you ask me for a recommendation, I would say at least probably $100,000 from the township where you could split that in two. If you further ask me how we were going to pay for that, I'd say we'd work out some arrangement with them where we would pick up part of those debt service payments over, I'd say probably four years or something like that as a way we'd cover that part of the cost. As I said, Mr. Coons is here. I don't know if you wanted to say anything else. Just introduce yourself at least.
I'm Chris Coons.
Well, you got to come to the microphone.
Thank you. I'm Chris Coons, representing Decibel Partners. As Doug's pointed out, we've had, you know, a very good relationship with the township to this point. We've appreciated the willingness of the township to participate in the improving, what has clearly been a safety issue and the traffic in that intersection has been a problem. PennDOT recognized that was a problem many years ago, but in themselves, they failed to step up to take care of the problem. So we appreciate the fact that from the beginning and the onset of this project, the Patent Township was willing to step up and do their part. As we've worked through the project, as Doug's pointed out, the cost of this considerably greater than what we initially expected. The initial expectancy of this project was about 1.5 million. You can see now it's about 2, 3. And we believe it wound up closer probably to 2, 5 till it's all over. So considerably over budget. The description that Doug's given of the situation is quite accurate. We had no way, obviously, of knowing that we're unsuitable soils under an existing PennDOT right away. So we, you know, it's not an area that we had access to. And beyond that, you know, as I look and listen to the conversation this evening about what's, you know, taking place in that area with the park, with additional development that we hope to see there, you know, with the Nittany Valley Sports Center, a lot of great things happening in that area. Obviously, that's going to continue to be a roadway that's going to be more heavily used. And hopefully, the improvements that we've both entered into at this point are going to make it a safer place. So we appreciate any further assistance that could be, you know, gained on that and happy to answer any questions or if anybody has any.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the general public? Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Coons. So the manager has recommended that the township contribute additional funds to help with this overage or the excessive extra costs that they're incurring. He's recommended an amount of $100,000. He also pointed out we have options. We could pay this as a lump sum or we could actually divide it up over a number of years through debt service payments, for instance, like, you know, 25K a year over four years. So any discussions or comments, any opinions by the supervisors? Is there anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we support the overage, as you called it, in the amount of $100,000.
Do you wish to also recommend, whether it's a lump sum payment or divided?
Do I need to? Recommend how it's paid?
Yeah, we'll figure out a budget at one way or the other.
Okay. Then I'll actually co-move if you wish to suggest a means of payment. It seemed to be more your bailiwick.
Well, we, let's vote on the original motion first and then assuming it's valid, then we can talk about it.
Okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Everyone voted aye, so the motion carries. Now, as far as funding, Doug, you want to just elaborate on possibilities?
Or state your preference?
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't tell you right now if we have $100,000. I haven't talked to Larry in any detail about it. My, I suspect with everything with the APR money and shuffling things around, we probably would have it. I see no reason why we wouldn't probably take advantage of the debt service that's there.
Which means dividing it up.
Yeah, and like I said, I'd suggest we do it for $25,000 payments over the next four years. It's, you know, the present value is slightly less for them, but at the end of the day, it's the same dollar amount.
Okay. Larry doesn't have his hand up, but it sounds good to me as far as dividing it up to four.
Yeah, we, yeah, I've got to get with Larry and Mr. Coons and figure out, first, the first debt payments due, I think, the 1st of January. So we'll have to figure that out and get them a amortization schedule. And we'll do all that in the next couple of months.
I see no objections from the board, so you proceed.
Yes, sir.
With that. Now, before we move on, I'm going to have to call another recess, another brief recess. Call the meeting back to order.
Oh, that's right. It's only just two of us here.
We'll continue with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is number 7A, Housing Task Force Update.
Back to 5C, please.
Oh.
Sorry.
5D?
C.
Oh, we skipped 5C, correct.
Yes.
Thanks for correcting me. 5C, Proposed Regulation for Small Cell Facilities in the Public Right Away. Take it away.
Thank you. This item, you'll see part of this tonight, a pricey part, at the next meeting and probably, and then you'll definitely see some more at the first meeting in October. This is all set up to pass these regulations on October 27th, which slides us in under the deadline of October 29th when we need to have these in place per Act 50 of 2021. Alex, could you pull up 5C-1? I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. I would suggest if you have questions, contact. I would suggest if you have questions, contact me tomorrow and we'll go over the detail. There's a lot of detail that I feel I need to go through this, at least with the board so you understand where we're going. Again, Act 50 was passed, please advance, please, Alex, in July by the, by the state legislature. It was a compromise between the carriers and the state in terms of regulation. They provide some, please forward, Alex, please. Yeah, okay. Small wireless facilities are really what's going to be, are the coming mode of transferring data technology. It's, it's going to replace the large towers, not completely, but you'll see these, and this is what's going to be, what's really driving 5G. You need more of these closer together because 5G doesn't have the range of 4G. So, you'll see, there's a couple pages of examples of what the small wireless facilities look like. There's some big towers, too. We're not talking about those, but we're talking about the small stuff. Now, the, the State and Federal Telecommunications Act, let's, please, dance forward, Alex. Yeah, we can skip over all this stuff. We can skip that, too. Go to Act 50, there you go. So, as it says, the second bullet down, this is a culmination of a four-year, let's say, negotiation instead of battle between the wireless industry and PA municipalities. All the, all the municipal leagues were part of it. PA Municipal League, I mean, PSATs, the County Commissioners Association, First Task Township Associations, and they were all involved in this. This really does set out parameters for both municipalities and, and the carriers on how we're going to go through this. So, next slide, please. We, our, under this act, small wireless facilities are like, going to be treated like PUC utilities. They have the right to be in the right of way. So, we have to come up with a permitting process that permits them. There are some things we can regulate about them, but it is fairly limited as it's shown on the, on the slide right now. There are some size limits, nothing higher than 50 feet. There's limits to the size of the actual antenna, the thing that sits on top of the pole, that's three cubic feet, and then all the other associated equipment for patent township will probably be sitting on the ground, but that can't be larger than 28 cubic feet. Next slide, please. So, there are really specific timeframes we have to meet when these, we get, receive applications for permits for these things. You can see 60 days for co-location on existing poles, 90 days for other things, and then the carriers can batch applications and things like that. There's limits on fees that we can, we can charge. We've got a few of these in the township right now. I can tell you they're paying us more than $270 per facility per year, but that's what we're going to be limited going forward with new facilities. Next, I'm going to come back to guidelines, but just keep in mind that beyond the ordinance we're going to pass, we're also going to have some guidance that is also permitted under Act 50 that, I don't have an example for you, but we'll talk about that at the next meeting. So, and next slide, please. So, and as I, next slide, yep, next slide. So, we're working on, I'm working on a draft ordinance. I'm going to show you a real quick version of that if you go to 5C2. As I said, I'm showing, going to show you part of where we're at tonight. You'll see there's some things that are highlighted in yellow as we run through this real quick. I have some questions I still need to resolve in my own head about this, but I'm getting closer to this. And then there's a final section in what you have tonight that's all yellow. That's the permitting process that I haven't done. Yeah, if you go back up to 41, 141.4, yeah, there you go. Thanks, Alex. I have borrowed quite heavily from the city of Pittsburgh on this, so most of what you see here, except the numbers are changed to meet the new Act 50, they had some tighter guidance in there, some tighter limits on pole height and things that they had instituted prior to, three years ago, I believe. But Act 50 permits new installations up to 50 feet, and we don't really have a say in that. Most of the stuff we do have in the township right now is in the 35 to 45 feet height, and we really haven't gotten complaints about it. So, we do have some things that we said under 41, preserving the right of way, so we do have rights to make them go anywhere in the right of way we want them to go. They can't just go wherever they'd like. Next page, please, under two, we have a, under that, paragraph two, there's a set of criteria that we first want antennas mounted on an existing pole. Number two, if there's not an existing pole, we want it on a replacement pole that will conform to our design guidance. That's the guidance document we'll talk about next time. If you can't do it on a replacement pole that meets our, our guidance, it has to be on a replacement pole. It might not meet our guidance, and we can put some additional conditions on that. And then, so there's this, there's this scale, you know, first, we want to co-locate it on somebody else's pole or a pole that we already have, and if you can't do that, you prove to us you can't do that, then you can go to the next one. And you have to go through each of these steps before you finally get to the bottom one where it says you can put a new pole in a block where there's no other poles at this point, but you have to prove to us that all, everything else is technically infeasible. And then also, if there's, I mean, you go down to three there, if there's an option to put this pole in an industrial or commercial zone instead of a residential, we'll go there first, and then the residential is the last, is the last option. So, there are some protections for us. If you go down to the next page and item probably F is the next one where we do establish distances from these new poles to go in, you can't impede ADA ramps, other things like that. Again, I borrowed heavily from the city of Pittsburgh. Next page, please, Alex, down to, yeah, next, design guidance there. So, that's where we reference design guidance that we will put together. I'll bring that forward at the next. It's just something that's not part of the ordinance, but it has the effect of the ordinance as the way Act 50 was set up. We'll show them examples of things we want, the types of thing, pretty much that we already have. You know, if you can make them look like this, they're acceptable. If you can't make them look like this, we're going to have to have some more conversation. So, those, we do have that, that authority to apply some of those, some of those requirements. And I think the rest then gets fairly technical about signage and a few other things, and then we get down towards the end of what I provided tonight, it's all yellow. That's a permitting process that City of Pittsburgh had a very, very detailed one. I don't think we need that much detail, but I do need to go through it and get something fairly specific so that carriers know exactly what they need to do, and then township staff knows what they need to do in response to that. So, again, you'll be seeing more parts of this in the next two meetings, and then with finally, new ordinance that hopefully we can pass on October 27th. Again, I wanted to run through it quickly, but make sure you understood where we're going, and if you do have any questions, I suggest contact me offline and we'll talk about it. Thank you.
You love this stuff, I can tell. Detail.
I don't know if love is the right verb, but...
I'm impressed, though.
If you're wonky, yes, it's kind of in.
Hey, you are. I'm not. You say that like it's a bad thing.
Moving on, because we're going to revisit this later, as Doug already said. Moving on, item 7A, Housing Task Force Update. Supervisor Tease, go ahead.
Okay, this will be fairly brief. Kudos to our staff. If you have received the Patent Township Newsletter, you will note that a full page is devoted to the Housing Task Force, and we also, kudos to Sophie Westen, our new communications person. She has worked with Nicole Pollak and I, so there is much information on our website if you go to menu, Government, Housing Task Force. There's a whole page opening and all of the minutes and reports from this year that have come to the supervisors, they are on one link. Details about the 18 members on the task force are on another. Some of the emphasis of why the task force met and what we are proposing concerning attainable housing, so there's a major presence now on our website. And in addition to the Patent Township Newsletter, and thank you for Doug and others who were able to get the information into the full newsletter, I know it required adding an additional page, but I think that's important for everyone to receive. I want to share with the supervisors tonight because these CNET videos will be going on, and they are, they will be referenced on the, our website and others, but this was an effort, and kudos to our township manager, Doug Erickson, who put us in touch with CNET to develop these videos. We asked for volunteers from our 18-member task force to be the group writing the scripts and thinking of the focus, that's where we came up with the phrase, "A Place for All", but serving on that subgroup were Kate Domico, who many of you know as the former chair of our Planning Commission, Rachel Fawcett with the Pennsylvania Housing Research Group, Tony Buddha, one of our resident representatives and a research hydrologist, Stephanie Fost, who's the director of Habitat for Humanity, Morgan Westkosus, a patent township resident who directs housing transitions, Christina Anexstein, who is a patent township resident, but also the Ferguson Planner, and of course, Nicole Pollak, who also went to narrate these videos and I think did an excellent job. So, there are three separate videos. They are less than two minutes each. I will show you all three. They will also be combined into one video that might be used going forward. And as the discussions emerge, because we see our October 27 report to the board as the beginning of a greater community dialogue, some of our recommendations, we are hopeful you will refer to the Planning Commission, that will then be having their own community discussions. Some other recommendations that do not involve zoning or ordinances will be specific for the supervisors and there again to involve the community. So, we want to get the word out that the process of community engagement begins on October 27, but will continue into the new year, and these videos are one step in attempt to indicate to the public how they can become involved and also to begin to present the importance of why we believe attainable housing is important for the future of patent township. So, thanks to Larry and Doug who have worked to be able to show you these videos. I presume we'll start with video one, two, and three. So, you want to let them show?
All right, I will try.
Okay, thank you.
Are you seeing that?
Yes.
I think you need to turn your sound up, Larry.
Yeah, we're not hearing it, Larry.
Okay, hold on. I'm not sure why you're not hearing it. Because I have the sound all the way up.
That is surprising, since all these are sound ideas.
Larry, CNET is saying, change your...
Your Zoom microphone.
Your Zoom microphone.
Hey, I can't, I can't hear you.
Hold on a second, CNET's coming to talk to you.
So, Larry, the two things you can do is if you go into your audio settings, yeah, perfect. So, if you go to your speaker settings, next to speaker, you're right, move, and then right over to the, to the right of that, see those options?
Yeah.
Press same as system.
Okay.
And then try microphone as well. Let me just see the options. Same as system, and then let's try that.
Okay.
Not 100% confident, but...
Can you hear it that far?
No.
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 Well, Larry, I have the first one on my, you know, in my email. Is there a way I could just play that to?
Yeah, we can.
Can we do it at the next meeting?
You're a co-host, you can share your screen.
Yeah, I don't know how to share screen, but...
Hit the green, share screen at the bottom, and then double-click on what you want to share.
Sure, let me go back. Even if we could just play the first one, you'll get a sense of things. Or if not, we'll get it all straightened out by the next meeting.
We apologize, we should have tested this a little better.
I think, yeah, get the bugs worked out, and she can show them next, at the next meeting.
Okay.
They'll be just as good next meeting.
Or we'll send them out, you can, they really are good.
Yeah, they are.
So, I've got, I can call it up, but then, oh, wait.
Anita, we're going to, we'll show them in two weeks at the next board meeting. That way we get all the bugs worked out.
That'll be, that'll be terrific, but I think you'll be very pleased with hearing Nicole's narration and the scripting.
Let me also suggest, Larry, if you'd send them to the board members?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get those out.
By email, attachments, so we can play them ourselves.
A sound idea.
Yeah, I can do that. That's great. Thank you, Anita. Anything else you want to close with?
They're also linked on our webpage.
Anita, anything you want to close with in your report?
No, just to let you know that task force is working hard, and we look forward to presenting to you on October 27.
Definitely very grateful for all your work, hard work, Nicole Pollak, and your, members of your task force.
Yeah. Incredible work.
Yeah. Next item, 7B, Energy Services Consultant Authorization. Is this Betsy or you?
Sigma. So, as you all know, we are, we, and a number of entities in the center region and school districts, so municipality, school districts, and authorities are planning, hoping to enter into a solar power purchase agreement. There is a core group within the solar power purchase agreement working group that sent out requests for proposals, received them. We are looking to hire a consultant to help us negotiate all of the details in setting up a power, solar power purchase agreement. The devil is really in the details in this. We are... We are, many meaning choices, not many of which I totally understand, which is why we have a core group. I will say that the core group narrowed down the, the request, the RFPs for consultant down to two or three groups, and one of them, which we, which they recommended is Green Sky Development Group. And I will say, they seem to come head and shoulders above the others. And one recommendation of this group is that it was the one that Penn State used, and Peter Buck, in fact, was, had worked with them, Green Sky Development Group, and recused himself from the decision process because he felt that it would not be fair to the others. But I think, you know, carrying Peter Buck's imprimatur really greatly recommended Green Sky. So the proposal is to go with Green Sky, and I'm hoping for your vote of approval to carry back to go with it. And I will say that, just remind everybody that this consultant will help in coming up with the agreement that all of these entities will enter into in this group, power purchase agreement. It does not obligate us in any way to go through with power purchase, with electricity purchase. Right now, we've talked about maybe getting a quarter of our power through the solar power purchase agreement, but we have not made any commitment, certainly not made a decision on that. The important thing to us is, I guess at this point, is the cost. And the original cost is, was proposed to us back in, over a year ago, when we started this, I forget. Actually, a couple of years ago, was about $800. For various reasons, the cost is, for us, is about $900 at this point. I will note that the State College Area School District, which is going to be the bulk of the user of this electricity, is also going to be paying the bulk of the cost for this consultant. The cost for the consultant is divided proportionately to the, I guess it's based on a percentage of electrical use that we have as a township and that the school district has as a school district. So with that, I would respectfully, I guess, ask for a motion that would allow me to go back and say it's okay to cast my vote in favor of hiring, as a consultant in this process, Green Sky Development Group.
So you can make that motion, right?
Should I make it?
Sure.
Okay, then I make that motion that I just described.
Seconded.
I will second it, however, I'm a little concerned that it's called Green Sky and that that's good, because Green Sky is usually seen just ahead of a tornado.
I did a double take on that color, too, when I first, it's a little hard to get, but I know what they're getting at.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
No, everyone voted in favor, so the motion carries. Thank you, Betsy.
Awesome. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Now, you have the next one, the Parkin, with Sun United Neighbors Solar Co-op.
Yeah, so this is another exciting, sunny option that we have. It is separate from the solar power purchase agreement. SUN, S, SUN United, I think it's called Solar, is it SUN United Neighbors? But it was Solar United Neighbors. Anyway, the abbreviation is, it is Solar United, yeah.
Oh, it is Solar, I apologize.
That's quite all right, it just threw me for a loop. So this SUN, or Solar United Neighbors, is a 501(c)(3), they're a nonprofit. Their business and life is to help individual homeowners make a decision whether to purchase solar powers, solar panels, either on the roof or in their yard. They offer a lot of technical services to individuals. They also have a mechanism for forming a cooperative group of neighbors who share a similar geography, with the idea that if there are a number of people who want the same service, and they form a cooperative, they are in a better position to go for an economy of scale of labor. So SUN, the Solar United Neighbors, is very skilled at technical information, conveying that to people. It's also very skilled at forming co-ops, and, but it relies on feet on the street, wait, feet on the ground, whatever, people who live in the area, who know the area, and who have access to communication networks and so on. So in addition to Solar United Neighbors coming into Center County and offering their services, they are looking for partners. Now, a partner is described in a couple of the handouts, 7(c) and 7(c)(1) and 7(c)(2), which I'll try and summarize. They're actually asking Patent Township to be a partner. Already COG is a partner, and I am here to report hot of the press that College Township, Bellefonte Borough, and the Sierra Club Mashana Group are also partners in Solar United Neighbors. The role of a partner is to essentially help form numbers, grow numbers in this group. I would like to propose that Patent Township also be a partner in this. It doesn't cost us anything, except enthusiasm and communication skills, perhaps a little time on the part of our communications person now, maybe Doug, as he's putting together the newsletter. I'll be working closely with Pam Adams of, who's on staff at COG, is our Sustainability Director, who will in turn be working with the people at Solar United Neighbors. SUN has information that they have prepared, what am I trying to say, graphics, communication tidbits that they can give to us for our website that we can put out. And then there are a number of ways that we can continue to kind of drive that. One of the handouts lists the four different stages and the roles that the partners could officially play. And I think it's up to us to do as much or as little as we want. I will say that one of the goals of our, which we are working on right now, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, is to have a 30% reduction in household fuel, energy use. One of the ways that we can reduce the energy use of the typical fossil fuel, or to get to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, is for houses to have solar panels on them. So that would help us meet our goals that we're setting in this Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So are there any questions about the role of being a partner? Oh, three last words I'd like to leave everyone with. So by becoming a partner with Solar United Technology, we will be giving this group a little gravitas, thought of these big college words, give it our imprimatur, but I think another way to say is that we'll be essentially giving it our seal of approval. I think we can all relate to that last one. So I would respectfully ask that the board approve Patent Township to be a partner of the Solar United Technologies. They're Solar United Neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay, that's been moved. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Elliot Abrams, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the motion to become a partner. Raise your hand, say aye.
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 Everyone votes aye, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betsy.
So I will add Patent Township to that, growing list.
Next item on agenda, 7D Real Estate Tax Appeal Settlement for Carnegie End.
I'll start, and then we'll let Betsy finish up, but this one's a little different than most settlements that we in air into in these things. Typically, the appellant has provided an appraisal, and then the county assessment office has done an appraisal, and we've been at least before a judge in a hearing or a conference before the judge recommends or strongly suggests that we come to some sort of settlement. In this case, the assessment office has deemed that it's, the time and effort to get an assessment, or to get an appraisal done would be excessive due to the number of reassessments being done on hotels in the state and across the country right now, and that we can come to a reasonable adjustment, and it seems to be, the appellant seems to be agreeable to this. Therefore, before Betsy posed it to me, whether she should sign it or not, I said, well, let's take it to the board and see if there's any questions or comments. So Betsy, did you have any other comments you wanted to provide?
I think you've done a nice outline. I mean, the, just so the board is clear, the appellant in this case did produce an appraisal that valued, by Kristin Allmiller, who's local, that valued the property at one and a half million and change. The board, the assessment board value was $2 million, so the amount represents the middle. And I think the board has a pretty good feeling that the best they get is an appraisal that puts it at the value they've selected. And the worst is, it drops, right? The appraiser comes closer to their value. We know from past experience that if we go in front of our judges, that, I won't say all the time, but I would bet 80% of the time, the judge splits the baby, and that's where we are right now. This saves the tax, the county assessment office, from paying for an appraisal. And again, it sets the value as of now, that does not mean that as COVID goes away and markets change, that the assessment board can't look at this issue. But right now, I think the feeling of the assessment board is that they're not going to get a better, a better result out of going through the litigation at this point in time. So that is their recommendation, I believe, but I don't know for sure that the school board has already approved this. So it really is just up to the township now to be the last signer. I think I can shadow for you that there are three, I'm trying to think in my mind, Doug, I think there are three other appeals of hotel properties in the township and one of a bank property. Those are still moving forward, and in fact, they have ordered appraisals on those. We will have status conferences in front of the court in November at this point, when those appraisals are back. And as Doug said, typically, that's when the judges kind of look at everybody and say, can you all come to another number, rather than going through the full-blown process? So.
All right, any questions, comments from the board? Is there any objection to Doug and Betsy Dupree continuing to proceed with this, with the direction they're going here with this proposed settlement agreement? I see no objection, Doug, so consensus is to just keep going.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Next item is 7E Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, proposed changes to bylaws and proposed resolutions for the 2021 Business Meeting. Go ahead, Doug.
Wanted to get this in front of the board now, and let you know we'll be looking at it in more detail on the 22nd. Please review the resolutions and decide whether you'd like to approve or reject. I'll provide my recommendation along with 22nd, and we'll be providing a direction to our voting delegate, Mr. Abrams, for that meeting in October.
That's all we need to do with that. Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. Any members of the board or supervisors wish to pull one of the consent agenda items for separate discussion and vote? Seeing none, so we have, I accept, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Betsy moved, Elliot seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Elliot?
Mr.
Okay, motion carries, five to nothing. Next managers' report.
Mr. Chair, just a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Anita.
Congratulations to Alexandra for her appointment as acting township engineer. I know all of us who've worked with her have been very impressed with her knowledge and experience and expertise, and congratulations for that.
Thank you.
All right, Doug, go ahead.
A couple pieces.
Yeah, go ahead.
Couple pieces of correspondence, and if you care to comment about State College Borough Water Authority's renewal application for groundwater withdrawal from the Saskatchewan River Basin Commission, instructions are in that letter. PennDOT provided information on the State College Area Connector website. There'll be public meetings on September 22nd to 23rd. This is the road that will tie Seven Mountains, Pine Grove Hills, to the existing, what we for years and years have called the bypass. So there are several routes that have been designated, and if you're interested in that process, please go to PennDOT's website or attend the public meeting on September 22nd and 23rd. In terms of announcements, mosquito spraying is still available from the county. If you're having mosquito problems, contact the county mosquito control supervisor, who's part of the Office of Planning and Community Development at the county. Again, for board supervisors, PML's Municipal Leadership Summit's October 7 and 9, you should have received...
Who is going to that, by the way?
I don't remember.
Pam and I are.
Dan, I'm going.
You're not, okay.
You're going, I don't remember who else is going.
So I'll make, if you haven't got a confirmation for your registration hotel, let me know, and we'll make sure we have those.
Okay.
So that's, again, Oak Wilk continues to be a problem. We found new cases on Galen Drive and Circleville Road. Circleville Road one's going to probably be expensive, because there's lots of other trees around it, but we'll do our due diligence to make sure we nip it in the bud. Sorry. Voluntary newsletter, you should have received your newsletter at home, but if you didn't, there's a copy involved. I think it's on the website, too. Again, we did add a couple pages this year to highlight the Housing Task Force and also put in one more call out on the American Rescue Plan for residents and folks to provide ideas. We've been getting a few survey suggestions, not a lot, but we'll talk about that again more at the next meeting. Census results, if you have looked at the census, you'll see that we only grew by 2.2% in the last 10 years, or that's what the count. Obviously, we believe we're undercounted in certain areas that are heavy student housing parks, mostly along Viral Boulevard and Toftree Avenue. We'll keep looking into what that, the impacts of those undercounts are in terms of monies we might get. We don't, we get very little federal aid, excepting the American Rescue Plan, but on a normal year, we get very little, very, very little federal aid. Probably the biggest impact we'll see would be in liquid fuel taxes we get from the state, as part of that's based on population. So I'll continue delving into that a little more, a little further, to kind of put a dollar number on that. Mark from the Center Region Planning is working on that, and between Mark and Nicole, they'll help us figure out what those numbers might be. And then final items were from my report. We're, under now, we've just started fall brush and leaf collection, so we'll be doing brush and leaf continually now for the... and leaf collection, so we'll be doing brush and leaf continually now for the next couple of months, so please get your stuff out to the curb. Remember, don't mix brush and leaves, because different equipment, pick them up. We've got a brand new brush collector, the HydroDig, so, but we can't pick up brush and leaves together, they have to be separate. Thank you for everyone for doing that. Children's Fair is October 9th, and Bulk Waste is October 18, 22. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board for Doug? Okay, if not, item 10, committee reports. You have copies of committee reports in your agenda packet and in the addendum to the agenda packet. Any board member wish to expound or expand your particular report, committee report? Okay, I don't see any hands, so we can move on. I see Finance meets tomorrow morning, which I'm on, and Parks Capital also meets tomorrow, which is Anita, I think, right? Yep.
Yes.
So you have there a list of future meeting dates and so forth, and we also, we, there's an inclusion of Senator County Airport Authority report from our representative, George Downsborough. Anything else? None, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Move by Betsy, seconded by Elliot, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone votes yea, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone.